Seats, please, we have a quorum. Please take your seats and may we have quiet, please. I call to order the second session of the Fall Town Meeting. May we please have quiet? Thank you. I have a couple of announcements before we start the festivities. There are a couple of vote corrections. On Article Four, the Advisory Committee Amendment, the final vote was eighty-four in favor, one hundred and thirty-six opposed, and five abstentions. On Article Six, the main motion, the final tally is one hundred in favor, one hundred and three opposed, and twelve abstentions. I want to say a couple of words about seating in the auditorium. In the first place, until I call non-town meeting members forward, all non-town meeting members, please sit to the rear of the barriers or whatever they are that indicate that only town meeting members forward of them. And I called speakers forward to sit in the front row in order to expedite our process. When you're through speaking, please return to your seats. Do not return to the front row. We have to leave spaces open for further speakers. Given the glacial pace of our proceedings, we're likely to need, certainly need a fourth night and possibly a fifth. And the fourth night is, we don't hold town meeting sessions during Thanksgiving week for obvious reasons. The fourth session is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, December five, and in the event, unlike unfortunate event that we need a fifth night, it's tentatively scheduled for December 11, which is a Wednesday, the day after the Driscoll referendum election. I remind you that speakers have a maximum of five minutes for presenters and three minutes for everyone else. I have made a number of exceptions and I'll announce them when I ask the speakers to the microphone. I didn't ride herd on you last night and as a consequence, a number of you ran over the time limits. Among them, some distinguished members of the Board of Selectment and Advisory Committee. This evening, I'm going to ride herd a little bit more carefully on the timing and I will warn you when you have one minute left. So those of you who were speaking for three minutes will get a warning after two. I don't particularly like badgering you, but in the interest of fairness to people who have worked hard to confine their remarks to their time limit, I'm going to do so this evening. We start out tonight with Articles twenty-six through twenty-eight, the articles relating to the change of name of the Coolidge Corner School. These articles, for one reason or another, have generated a considerable amount of heat in the lead-up to town meeting. And again, I caution you that when you speak to these articles, either from the speaker's dais or from the mics, do not engage in personalities. Maintain your civility and the decorum of the meeting. And I hope that I won't have to discipline anyone for running afoul of these general rules. One last thing. Those of you who are wearing the green badges, I guess they're tape-ons this size, please remove them. We have a rule in town meeting that political badges of more than a small size are just simply not allowed. So if you'll cooperate, for instance, you, sir, in the fourth row. Thank you. Okay. We start with a single debate on Articles twenty-six through twenty-eight. The motion under Article twenty-six is on page twenty-six dash six. It's moved by Ms. Brown and seconded by Mr. Green. That the town name the PK eight school located at 345 Harvard Street, the Florida Ruffin-Ridley School, effective September 1, 2020. There is a motion made by Mr. Selwyn, seconded by Ms. Cates, to refer the subject matter of Articles twenty-six through twenty-eight to a moderator's committee, and that motion is found on the yellow supplement, orange supplement, I guess it's orange, on page The motion under Article twenty-seven is to rename the school in honor of Ethel Weiss, and there is no motion offered under Article twenty-eight. So your choices this evening are to support the motion to refer, to support the Ridley name, or to support the Weiss name. When we debate these articles, I will go from one cohort to the next. We'll start with Ridley, next is Weiss, and third is the motion to refer and other town meeting members, non-town meeting members who have comments that they wish to make but are not necessarily supporting either Ridley or Weiss. So I call on Ms. Brown and Ms. Norton for the initial presentation for Ridley. You have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Brown, town meeting member, precinct one, and I, along with co-petitioners, would like to thank a great many people for getting us here today. And that's just, that's the partial list. A lot of folks put a lot of sweat and love into this, so we just wanted to start the presentation with a thank you.
Could you speak a little louder, please, or into the microphone? Thank you.
I will happily speak louder. So thank you all for helping get us this far. It has not been easy and we're almost there. So I wanted to start off by saying that, you know, this has been a long, arduous, and thorough process. You know, and honestly, I feel like we've all been through enough. So let's end this tonight. A referral benefits no one. On a personal note, I want to talk very briefly about how difficult this has been for me. I mean, I moved to Brookline with an idea of an inclusion and a vision of being welcomed. And I sat in meetings and I heard things about, you know, how basically slavery was But a funny thing happened on the way to the forum, you know? I met fifteen young people who took up the mantle and got involved in renaming the Coolidge Corner School. And, you know, I actually went from being beleaguered to positive because they understood quickly what the legacy of slavery meant then and what it means now to so many of us. I listened to their thoughtful presentations at numerous community events and public hearings, and I learned about the many diverse heroes with ties to Massachusetts and Brookline. And Florida Ruffin-Ridley was one of them. She lived here for twenty years until she was too old and frail to live here by herself. So Brookline now has, and Brookline now has a chance to correct a historic omission and rename the Coolidge Corner School after Florida Ruffin-Ridley. She was a resident, a teacher, a suffragist, a civil rights leader, a writer, and she reflects not only the town's values, the town's values, but also the values of the school and the values in so many of our homes. Now, I could run through the litany of the things that Florida Ruffin-Ridley has done, but because of our preparation, if you don't have it by now, honestly, I'm wondering whether you want it. So you've got the materials. She was an amazing woman, and she did these things when they just weren't done. So I'm wrapping up. So Florida Ruffin-Ridley was no ordinary person, and honestly, the Coolidge Corner School is no ordinary school. And Brookline deserves to be affiliated with someone like her. And honestly, I've gone from a place of a genuine feeling of despair to hope and pride that this community is going to step forward and do the thing that, you know, the students at that school are looking at us to do, the town, you know?
You have one minute.
I can manage my time. The nation, people are looking at us. There is very little difference between what Edward Devotion did and the legacy of having a Jefferson Davis statue. People are looking at us. Making the Coolidge, renaming the Coolidge Corner School the Florida Ruffin-Ridley School is something that, you know, it's the best thing we can do. So I ask you, let's make history tonight. Let's end it. Let's celebrate. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Rutman.
Moderator.
Sam told me this time is three and a half minutes, so maybe I can, okay, five minutes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, my name is Larry Rutman. I've lived in the town all my life. I live right up here on Sumner Road. I went to the Devotion School, Brookline High School, University of Massachusetts. Close to the mic. Okay. Did that get lost?
Yeah.
Okay, so that, I've been around for a long time in this town, and I think the first thing I want to do is to tell you about my love affair with Ethel Weiss. It started when I was a fourth grader in 1939, and it ended in 2015 when she was a hundred and one and died that year, and I was eighty-four. So that, and I think she was a great lady, and I got into this late because I was involved in other things, and I just could not understand why this school was not going to be named after her. Then I got into it and I realized that there's some sort of a racial struggle was going on, and this shouldn't be about race at all. This has divided the community. It's made a situation where white people call other white people racist because they're for a white person. Is that Brookline? That's not the Brookline I knew. I sat in the town meeting when I was younger, in the sixties. That's not the Brookline I know. And I know that a lot of you people are coming here to vote for Florence Ruffin-Ridley. Yeah, she's a great person, but what did she have to do with the Devotion School? Ethel Weiss was in there, Sundays included, practically for thirty thousand consecutive days. Is that how long that is? That's from the time of Gettysburg Address by Lincoln to the beginning of the Second World War. What an amazing woman she was. I loved her. I bought little candy hats from her when I was a kid. And then after that, I started a new career as a writer because she encouraged me to do so. She could have said, hey, Larry, get a life, practice law. Didn't say that. She was a great, great woman. Do you know that there are famous, there are people that are not famous who are great people, who walk among us every day? She was one. She walked among us every day for eighty, for seventy-six consecutive years. How many people can say that? I said to myself, the reason, I'll tell you the reason I got into this. I said, how can it be anybody else? Is there anybody in the world's history that had a history like that? She was intimately tied with the school. The school was intimately tied with her. Thousands of kids, including me, went by her. She taught them all great things. She was a great teacher. She had high moral standards. She was, she was quiet, but yet she was forceful. She taught them the right thing. I've sent you four letters. I don't know how many people, maybe some of the people who are for Ridley got my letters and said, hey, goodbye. But if you read them, you would have found out an awful lot. Before the naming committee, Paige Scott Reed, who's a black attorney, transportation attorney in Boston, was the head counsel for the DOT and also for the MBTA, she got up and said, this is, you know, I'd love Devotion School. My kids all went to Devotion School, and this is wrong. This procedure was not right. Well, what about these kids? Yeah, they did a lot of work. Work is not the criterion. The criterion is who fits for that school. But they did a lot of work. And what if, if they lose tonight, which they probably won't, but you really should vote for Ethel Weiss, in my estimation, but if they lost, they would find out more about democracy. And, you know, I'm thinking of the guy, the Colonel who testified yesterday before the committee in Washington, Vindland, is that his name? Who's a true American. So what, if they learn, if they get Ridley on this, and this faulted process was so faulted, that they're going to think that you can do things by fiat in the United States of America. No, you can't. This is a democracy. It's not by fiat. They'll find out that you have to sell your idea in the marketplace of ideas. That's democracy.
You have one minute, Mr. Rutman.
How much time do I, all right, let me go to, how many, one minute? Boy. Okay, I'll tell you a little about Ethel Weiss. Let me get off of that stuff. Seventy-six years I told you about. I told you about her life was in that school. Told you about her moral uprightness. Thousands of kids, I told you that. Nobody can match her right to be, have that school named after her. Seventy-six continuous years, 1939 to 2015. You saw my letter to the tab in June. That's when I got into this. The Marquardt Obituary in the Globe in 2015, he spent something like eighteen hundred words. I didn't, you know, they don't usually allow an obituary that long. He wrote about Ethel Weiss. It's so moving. And the four letters I sent you, one of the people is going to speak on my team and who wrote one of those letters, so moving, she went to Devotion School, and I'm talking about Trudy Goodman, who you'll meet, and you'll, I just, I don't know what to say to you. I know that I'm advancing.
Say it quickly because you're out of time.
Twenty-one seconds, have made up your mind about. I implore you, I beg you, I tell you that as a citizen of the United States of America, you will be doing the right thing to follow your heart and not follow the crowd, to follow your heart and vote for a person who was intimately involved with those kids for seventy-six years. Nobody ever heard of Florence Ruffin-Ridley.
Okay, Mr. Rutman, please conclude.
And so I'm getting off, moderator. Thank you so much for the time. I, all I can say is that I hope it really, I hope it happens. I hope I've.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Selwyn.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Lee Selwyn, town meeting member, precinct thirteen. I'm also a member of the Advisory Committee, but I'm not speaking for the Advisory Committee. The two previous speakers both made reference to process, and that's what I want to use my time to discuss with you this evening. This has turned out to be an incredibly divisive issue, and I think that it's time for us to take a breather and consider the implications of what went on through this process. I was the petitioner of Article twenty-eight, recommending that Robert Spurber be the name of the school. I'm with, I've withdrawn my motion under Article twenty-eight because I felt that after the humiliation that the naming committee perpetrated on Dr. Spurber, I didn't want to subject the Spurber name and the Spurber family to further humiliation. The naming committee disqualified him from consideration under a basically bogus legal theory that he had to have been an employee of the town for twenty-five years, was only an employee for eighteen, notwithstanding the fact that he, after retiring in the mid-eighties, continued to serve the town for almost thirty years until his death. Town council has determined that the naming committee's action was improper and a violation of their own rules. I want to talk to you about the process that led us here and why I think it has to be revisited and why I'm moving to refer. Last December, the school department issued an invitation to the public to submit nominations for a new name. The nomination period was open from mid-December to about the 23rd of January. About two-hundred-and-fifty people participated in that. There were a little over a hundred names, unique names that were submitted. The name that received the most nominations was JFK, John F. Kennedy, who incidentally was actually a student at the Devotion School. The second highest vote-getter happened to be Ethel Weiss. She got twenty votes. Florita Ruffin-Ridley got two votes, and the two nominators of Ridley happened to be the two petition, the two lead petitioners on this article. You've heard a lot about the work that the students did. The student committee was set up, it was run by the Coolidge Corner School administration and some faculty members. The two petitioners were given basically access to these kids without them having to hear from anybody else. Early on in the process, somebody in the school committee or the school department or some combination made the decision that the name that would be selected would be an African-American. This was never disclosed to people who submitted those nominations. And I think that when the names finally were, when the semifinalists were finally issued and all but one was a person of color, it sort of brought home the disparity that existed as between the process and the result. And it reminded me actually of Martin Luther King's famous remark, "I have a dream, and my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character." And yet, the process adopted by the school committee did just that. It excluded very qualified nominees based on the color of their skin. Now, the very fact that Ethel Weiss did not even get a serious look by the students, I think kind of sends the message that I'm trying to suggest. The students were led by the petitioners and by others with similar views on restorative justice. You know, it's kind of interesting, we're going to later this week or next or next month or whenever we get to it, we will be talking about reducing the voting age to sixteen. At the Advisory Committee, we had a discussion about that, and some people expressed concern that perhaps sixteen-year-olds really weren't in a position to understand some of the more complex issues. And yet, an issue as complex as restorative justice, we somehow expected eight- and nine-year-olds to deal with. Think about that. Why don't we just reduce the voting age to eight? Well, obviously, that's not going to happen, and what we ended up with in this process shouldn't have happened either. I think that referral and the referral motion that I'm proposing would basically restart this process. It would be a do-over. It would take a year. We would retain the Coolidge Corner School name for that period. The process would be open to the public. Public hearings would be held at all stages of the process.
You have one minute.
Thank you. And the nominations, the moderator's committee would consist of the three petitioners, the three, the petitioners and the three names. It represented the Advisory Committee, the Naming Committee, the School Committee, and anyone else the moderator might see fit to appoint. I think that the divisiveness that you've witnessed here and that has beset this process is very serious, and it's silly for us to have, to go forward and reach a decision that has so many people upset about the way it was done and the racial overtones of the process. So I urge you to vote for referral. Let's do it over and let's do it right. And if we, we may end up in exactly the same place, but if we do, I think we'll all have confidence that it was an open, fair, and fully public process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sandman.
Good evening. I'm Mike Sandman, town meeting member from precinct three and chair of the Advisory Committee, speaking on behalf of the Advisory Committee. In May 2018, town meeting voted to select a new name for the Devotion School through a process to be determined by the school committee. That process is explained on the hot pink sheets that you received entitled "Coolidge Corner Naming Process" in your supplemental mailing. The name of Florita Ruffin-Ridley, a Brookline resident and a national figure in her time in civil rights and civil liberties, was selected by a group of students, a student committee. Two other worthy names have been offered via citizen petitions, although, as you've heard, Mr. Selwyn is withdrawing Article twenty-eight, which offered up the name of Robert Spurber. Bylaw 2.2 requires that the Advisory Committee consider all articles in the warrant for purpose of making recommendations to the town. We're appointed because we bring, or hopefully bring, a collective expertise in financial and operative matters, and my colleagues are amazingly generous in giving their time to consider such items, but naming a school is a matter of individual judgment. Neither financial nor operational experience applies. So after a two-hour hearing and three debates on whether we should even debate these articles, we decided not to make a recommendation on Articles twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. That doesn't mean we're recommending no action. We have no recommendation. Initially, the votes were by eighteen to nine on Article twenty-six, twenty-two, four with one abstention, and twenty-two, four with one abstention on Articles twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Three debates. We could have saved a lot of time by just debating the three names. Lesson learned. But perhaps a summary of our debates will give you some insight into the matter that you are perfectly qualified to decide without input from us. Our subcommittee reported on the criticisms it heard in its public hearing about the process used to choose the name, and you've heard some of those criticisms. The school committee members closest to that process couldn't come to our first meeting, but at the second public meeting, Superintendent Ben Lobbis came with two school committee members and he provided the description on the hot pink. members and he provided the description on the hot pink pages and answered questions about it, and it was very helpful. I wish the school committee had provided that to us and to the public much sooner. Hopefully, that's another lesson learned. I'll come back to the process in a moment. In our third round, we voted no action, not no recommendation, but no action on a motion to retain the name Coolidge Corner School. Four in favor, thirteen opposed, nine abstentions. And a similar motion may be offered to you tonight with a referral appended to it. Back to the naming process. Seeking to correct the errors of the past by taking some affirmative step in the present is described as restorative justice. For example, the New York Times has been publishing the obituaries of women whose nineteenth and twentieth-century accomplishments were largely ignored, restorative justice for millennia of ignoring the contributions of women to society. The Times seeks to redress its pastoral missions, and it also wants to teach its readers a history lesson they didn't get in school. The students involved in choosing a name were told about the concept of restorative justice for African-Americans whose contributions to life, American life, have similarly been ignored. Did that bias them? I suppose that if they'd been informed about underappreciated Swedish authors who lived in Brookline rather than under-recognized black women, they would have paid extra attention to the names of Swedish authors. But is that biasing the result, or should it be called teaching history? And perhaps not just for the students.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'll ask you to hold your applause to the end of the presentation. Thank you.
One last word on process. Some have said that a group of students working on what was, in essence, a history project as part of their schooling.
You have one minute.
Thank you. Should have been subject to the open-meeting law. Really? The advisory committee believes we do not need, we on the advisory committee, do not need to make a recommendation to you. Judgment of the naming process is in your hands, along with the choice of a name to supersede that of Edward Devotion, a public-spirited man and a slaveholder.
Thank you. Maya Norton. It was my understanding that you were going to share the five-minute presentation with Ms. Brown. Was I misinformed?
I have a bit of time left. Can I?
I'm sorry. Please come forward.
May I make a presentation?
Yes, you may. Now's the time to do it. You have three minutes. And all subsequent speakers will have three minutes, except Ms. Goodman.
Good evening. My name is Maya Norton. I am a co-petitioner of warrant Article 26, a parent at the Coolidge Corner School, and co-founder of the Coalition to Eliminate Racism in Brookline. I am honored to stand before you tonight and ask for your vote for Florita Ruffin Ridley. Rudyard Kipling wrote, "All people like us are 'we,' and everyone else is 'they.'" As a parent, core values I have taught my children are curiosity, compassion, and justice. When we see a movie or are reading a book, I always ask them, "Who is represented? Who is missing? And why do you think the author made those choices?" The renaming process has been one of discovery. As a town, we are discovering people whose names and deeds we should have known all along. At the beginning of the renaming process, Florita Ruffin Ridley was not anyone's first choice. She was a complete unknown to the vast majority of townspeople. But she rose through the hard work of the students, who, through curiosity, compassion, and a sense of justice, recognized her greatness in the process of discovery. Through long hours of research, a deep desire to learn, and a strong commitment to serve their community, the students recognized Florita Ruffin Ridley. They chose her from one-hundred-and-nineteen names as the person that they wanted to represent their childhood school, the only school to be named after a teacher in all of Brookline. No one doubts that there are many good people who have made an impact on the community who are deserving of recognition, and we should find better ways to honor them. But Florita Ruffin Ridley is a hero. And when my children graduate with the name Florita Ruffin Ridley School on their diplomas, I will know that I am launching them into the world with the best possible education that Brookline had to offer because of the hard work they did in their classrooms and because our community believed in justice. Author Alice Walker wrote, "Healing begins where the wound was made." Tonight, you have a choice. Tonight, we move forward together to honor a woman who was a true hero of our community and our nation. In order to make this happen, we have specific instructions for you. You must vote Florita, you must vote yes on Florita, and after that, you must vote no on everything else. We stand in deep gratitude for your support, and in conclusion, go Flow.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman. Okay, Ms. Cates?
Wait a minute.
Yep. Sorry.
It's okay. It takes a while. So, my name is Trudy Goodman. I want to start by saying something. I think this is incredibly important. History is a wonderful thing, but let's try and live in the present a little bit, too. Okay? So, I bring you greetings from all over the place, from Israel, California, Florida, Jamaica Plain, all kinds of people who, when they found out I was coming here tonight, wanted me to tell you about Ethel Weiss. So, but let me start with something I think is really important. I don't really care what color anybody is. And I happen to be a person who is racially mixed. And you cannot look at me and know that by looking at me, can you? You can't. If you met my grandfather, yes, you could. If you walked through this door right now, he kind of looked like Richard Pryor with a little yarmulke on, but that's what he looked like. So here's the thing. I have no issue with Ms. Ridley. What I have an issue with if we're going to rename the Edward Devotion, and there's a lot of me, because I'm a schoolteacher, that says, "Don't. Use it as a teaching model." Go in there and talk about slavery. It's incredibly important, incredibly important. And I won't tell you that it isn't. Massachusetts has a wonderful history of being part of abolitionism and the Underground Railroad. Let's talk about every single part of it, good and bad. Here's why I tell you about Ethel Weiss. And I want to tell you a couple of stories, because this is what works for me. Okay? First of all, I want you to imagine, not too hard to imagine, a little fat, shy kid, that was me. And I would go into Ethel's candy store, and she sold all the other kinds of things, too. And I would buy lots of candy bars, because I was really shy and I didn't know how to talk to anybody. I was new at the Edward Devotion. I had wonderful teachers at the Devotion, by the way, who I remember fondly. And Ethel stops me one day at the door, and Ethel says to me, "I'm not going to let you buy any more candy bars, Trudy. What are you doing?" And makes me talk to her. That's the kind of person that Ethel was. Ethel loved children, was a fair person, was, I've said this before, tough love. You didn't get any tougher than that. Now, a woman who couldn't be here tonight, who grew up in the Egmont Projects, and for those of you who don't know where that is, is down the other end of Pleasant Street, told me her brothers used to go in and steal candy from Ethel. And Ethel knew about it. And one day, Ethel just stopped them at the door and said, "If you can't respect me by not taking things from me, respect yourself by not taking things from me." Now, if you really want the candy bars, you can help me move the garbage to the back of the building, so, you know. That's the way Ethel worked. Ethel also made sure to put together money for scholarships for kids at the Devotion. My father was a cab driver. We had absolutely nothing. She knew that when I would walk into her store to buy notebooks. She knew all about that. I'm not telling you, don't name something after Florida Ridley. I'm telling you, the Coolidge Corner School is not what you name.
You have one minute.
Okay, so, let me just wrap this up. If you want to deal with racial inequality in this town, and there is a lot of it, let's be honest, go into the Egmont Project, go into the High Street Project, go down to the disability units on Station Street, go to the village at Brookline, ask the people who live in those buildings, who are predominantly of color, what they need. Start in the present. And when things get rebuilt here at Brookline High, name one of the wings after Florida Ridley. I have absolutely no problem with that. The Coolidge Corner School? Yes. If you're going to rename it, name it after Ethel Weiss. It is what is fair. However, I have to tell you that Ethel Weiss probably wouldn't want you to do that, but if you're going to do it, name it for Ethel Weiss. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cates.
Beth Cates, town meeting member, precinct nine, and co-petitioner on the motion for referral. I don't think anyone here would dispute that Florita Ruffin Ridley, Ethel Weiss, Robert Spurber, and the over one-hundred others that were nominated to have the Coolidge Corner School named for them were credible choices. But that's not the issue. I'm going to give you a little different perspective on this as someone who spent a lot of hours at Devotion, otherwise known as Devo. I'm asking you to support this motion because it's the right thing to do. Last year, when the warrant article to rename the Edward Devotion School came up for a vote at town meeting, I'll be honest with you, I abstained. I thought it was pretty trivial compared to the town's treatment of Gerald Alston, Officers Pilot and Zarima Gunn and others. I didn't think it was as important as addressing racism in Brookline's institutions. I dismissed the gesture as window dressing. I was pretty annoyed that the school that my son had graduated from and where I had been PTO president was being singled out in this way. It seemed like Devo was always at the bottom of the Brookline Public School totem pole. It had to fight harder for social workers and specialists to address the challenges of being the largest and most diverse school in the district and of being the most overcrowded at the time. Its then-decrepit building was repeatedly shoved back to the back of the renovation line, first behind Lawrence, then Runkle, then Heath. If I were on a restorative justice, if we were on a restorative justice crusade, there were schools like Heath and Lawrence with similar issues. Why was Devo the only target? I didn't want to engage in the renaming process. I had pretty much stopped caring what they named it.
You have one minute.
Okay. I have to find my place. Others seemed to care, though. My son's classmates were kind of ticked off, but they all moved on, but they'd all moved on to college. I watched the renaming process unfold. It seemed pretty discombobulated. Why was the Brookline School Administration charging a group of pre-teens with the public, with naming a public building? These students were younger and with less knowledge and life experience than the sixteen-year-olds that many of you don't believe are ready to vote in town elections. They would have to rely on adults for direction, context, and wisdom that they couldn't possibly have. A group of students attending the Coolidge Corner School in a single year would choose a permanent name for the school. What about the students who came before? They were not represented on the committee, except for a couple of high school students. What about the community, parents, teachers, neighbors? They were not represented in the process beyond the suggestion box phase. The greater community was unaware of the limited restorative justice rubric that the impressionable committee would be asked to use to winnow out names. The Believers in Change were good students. They knew what to do to please the adults around them and get an A.
Please conclude.
I will. Thank you. Neither town meeting nor town residents decided that choosing a permanent name for the Coolidge Corner School should be an exercise in restorative justice.
No, no, no. You need to conclude, Ms. Cates.
I have two paragraphs.
You have three minutes, and it's now three minutes and twenty-five seconds. Please conclude.
I will just say, that decision appears to have been made by the petitioners for the original renaming article and the superintendent. It was chosen by the, a school establishment that adheres to a social justice ideology that race and gender identity are so important that they trump all else. Parents explicitly said that they felt so.
Ms. Cates? Thank you very much. Mr. Pearlman?
Follow this question.
I won't allow that motion at this time. We're going to hear from Mr. Pearlman. We're going to then hear from Ms. Joswicki. Then we're going to hear from a group of students in favor of the Ridley name and a student in favor of the Weiss name, and we'll see what happens after that. Mr. Pearlman?
David Pearlman, town meeting member, precinct fifteen, school committee member, and Devotion alum, speaking on behalf of the school committee. By a vote of seven to zero to one, the school committee recommends favorable action on warrant Article 26. The selection of Florita Ruffin Ridley as the new name for the Coolidge Corner School represents the culmination of an eighteen-month public process that included nine public hearings and several additional public meetings. Although the nomination of names for town buildings has typically been decided by a small number of elected individuals and departmental staff, this naming process included families and staff of the Coolidge Corner School community, Devotion alumni, the town naming committee, the select board, the ad hoc task force on school names, and the general public. The school committee settled on a process only after these stakeholders provided input. By September thirteen, 2018, the process that the school department and school committee developed had been shared at three different school committee meetings with public comment and had been revised five times. In response to public interest in student participation, a student group of fourteen students, ten between grades three and eight and four from the high school, served on the student naming committee called the Believers in Change. The students received one-hundred-and-nineteen unique nominations for the new school name from the general public and evaluated each one in accordance to the four elements of the town's naming criteria, the three elements of the school motto, "Work hard, be kind, help others," and restorative justice. As the Edward Devotion School name had been removed by town meeting after learning details of Edward Devotion's history as a slaveholder, it seemed appropriate for restorative justice to be one of the eight criteria from which to consider the one-hundred-and-nineteen nominations. After narrowing the one-hundred-and-nineteen unique submissions to fifteen semifinalists, there were three public renaming nights where the public interacted directly with the students and provided input.
You have one minute.
On June sixth, 2019, the school committee held a public hearing to solicit feedback on the finalist's names and also heard from supporters of other names. Out of the eleven school buildings in Brookline, only one is named after a woman and none after a person of color. By renaming the Coolidge Corner School the Florita Ruffin Ridley School, we honor ourselves as a town by recognizing an individual of august accomplishment, more on that from other speakers, whose underrepresented background as an African-American and as a woman could have left her extensive contributions forgotten and overlooked. By choosing the name Florita Ruffin Ridley, we honor the diligent efforts of our students, whose months-long work and scholarship helped produce a name worthy of their pride. We honor our teachers by naming a school after one of their most pioneering predecessors. We honor a local Brookline legend whose legacy deserves immortalization. Florita Ruffin Ridley made history. It is time for Brookline to make history and name this school in her honor.
Thank you. Please conclude, Mr. Pearlman. Ms. Joswicki?
Joyce Joswicki, town meeting member, precinct nine, former school committee member, Devotion School parent from 1969 to 1991, and a former Devotion School PTO president. The motto of the school now is "Work hard, be kind, help others." The living embodiment of that motto was Ethel Weiss every day. Talking about a process was not open. The culling of the original nominees was done without public comment. The children never heard from any nominators, except the petitioners of this article. That's not an open process. If Ridley had come out of an open process, we would not be here. Ethel Weiss spent seventy-six years teaching our students, loving our students, working hard, being kind, and helping others. In a town that is, has a large Jewish population, we have nothing named for a Jew, not one school. school. We have nothing named for a Latino or an Asian. Restorative justice doesn't mean it has to be a black person. What we want is a person who loved, a person who cared. There are children all over the world. Devotion has had children from 38 countries. Almost 30 languages were spoken in the school before we started having special language programs at different schools. And Ethel worked with them all. All over the world, there are kids who have grown up, who are adults now--
You have one minute.
--living Ethel's motto. If you want to honor someone who belongs with devotion, with our town, it's Ethel Weiss.
Thank you. Now, I ask the Coolidge Corner School students who are speaking in favor of Ms. Ridley to come forward, please, and to the microphone. There should be seven of you, and I won't try to name your names, but as you get up to speak, please tell us your names. And I ask town meeting members to respect the students who were diligent and, in fact, brave enough to speak before us. Respect them for doing so and not decide that they're happened to be on. So go ahead. You all have five minutes.
Good evening. I'm eighth grader Tyra Escoto. As a young Latina woman of African descent, naming our school after an influential woman of color and educator is a great step forward in our society. Our committee made sure everyone in school knew about the process and had a chance to voice their opinions. All students were invited to share their feedback in school and online. We took into account all the feedback and added it to our criteria. For instance, we saw that people wanted someone with a connection to our town. And did you know that Florida and her family were among the first black families to live in Brookline? Also, in three school meetings in the auditorium, we presented in person to all the grades, pre-K to eighth grade. It makes me wonder, why are we having this conversation? We had this long and thoughtful process where we included everyone's thoughts and opinions and ended up with a person who's qualified, maybe even overqualified, to be the name of our school. Thank you.
Now, if you don't mind holding your applause until the last of the seven student speakers speaks, I'd certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Heath Colbert-Laurie, a sixth grader. For anyone who may be on the fence about their vote tonight, I think it's nice to want to name a school after a nice person who found time to give back to her community, but it's historic and heroic to want to name a school after the groundbreaking and glorious Florida Ruffin Ridley, whose legacy before this process was almost forgotten. During the public renaming night, the school committee's listening sessions and townwide public hearings, we believers spoke out to remind the community that there was a process and we followed it. We are asking today for you to understand that as a group of hard-working kids, we really do value restorative justice over lollipops. Thank you.
My name is Felix. I'm a fifth grader at CCS. I am most inspired by Florida Ruffin Ridley because she started many important organizations. These are great accomplishments because she was a woman of color at a time there was still segregation. There are many great people, but they haven't done what Florida has done. Florida did what was great, but they were all erased and covered up because she was a woman. I bet nobody knew who she was despite her accomplishments. I would like to mention that in any vote, some will be unhappy, but we should still respect the process. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Liv Clowder, and I am a fifth grader. You can't right slavery's wrong. You can't cover up history. But naming our school after Florida Ruffin Ridley is a start. My school is my education. My education is my future, and we are naming our school for the future. We believers considered each nominee not just for who they were as a person, but more for who they were going to be as a school name. We took into consideration the fact that the school name was going to have an impact on the generations of students to come. Florida Ruffin Ridley is a great role model, and she personifies our school motto of "Work hard, be kind, and help others," because that is what she did throughout all of her life's accomplishments. She also shows us that we can have courage, even when we are talked down or underestimated. I have confidence standing up here right now because of her, and I know the cause I'm fighting for is right. And that is why she inspires me and why we should name our school in her honor. Thank you.
I'm Gareth Jones. I'm an athlete and freshman at this establishment, BHS. We did have to endure the backlash of adults who wrongly believed that we were manipulated and exploited by people who were actually supporting and defending us. It is humbling that we did have a voice, a powerful voice, in this process. We are not just kids. We're not that easy to push around. We can and will make change now and in the future. If you take this decision away from the students who made it, what message are you telling us? It's time for you to recognize us as leaders. That's what we are. That's what we will be. And isn't that what you want us to be? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hannah Saleña. I'm a seventh grader at the Coolidge Corner School. Florida Ruffin Ridley was an influential woman who fought for racial and gender justice in the world. She said, "All we ask for is justice, not mercy or palliation, simply justice." She will teach all the current and future students to stand up for the causes they believe in. She was also the second African-American to teach in Boston and taught for eight years, until she married her husband and moved to Brookline. At that time, women teachers were no longer allowed to teach after they married. After her teaching career ended, she became involved in the women's suffrage and anti-lynching movements. She also dedicated her work to preserving black history and culture. Florida Ruffin Ridley inspires and will inspire generations of students in our school to stand up against the unfairness and injustice in their communities. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm eighth grader Emery Shendu Ruiz. I'm inspired by Florida Ruffin Ridley because she was born when slavery still existed and despite that went on to fight against racial and gender inequality. As a young black Latino with ancestors who suffered similar brutal experiences due to men like Edward Devotion, it's an obligation to my heritage to be a part of this group that would seek such justice. I ask you, if we reject Florida, what message will that send to the generations and generations of immigrant and African-American students who could look to her as a hero? When people think about Brookline, do you want them to think of a system that silenced the opinions of students who dedicated countless hours of their time just for the good of their school? I don't think so. I'm a writer, and so is Florida. What do you want to be written about Brookline? That we made history celebrating a real American hero? Or that we were cowards who bowed to racism? The choice is yours. Thank you.
As you can see, your town meeting appreciated your presence and all the work you put into Sam Haber, please come forward. And next, we'll hear from Dan Lyons. Come forward, please.
My name is Sam Haber, and I'm a seventh grader at the Coolidge Corner School. I remember the first time I visited Irving's. I was with my sister walking home, and we stopped there to get candy, like many thousands of kids did. That first time still sticks with me. I remember the bookshelves full of wonderful toys, the candy rack Ethel had next to her as kids filed in and out of her store. I counted out my sister's change, a habit Ethel introduced as a learning opportunity for all of us. She was a real teacher. This process seemed to be a great opportunity back when it was started. Now, many of you just want to get over with it. This is because this process has so far deviated from the facts and into the realm of opinion that the facts have been forgotten. Ethel Weiss lived in Brookline for 74 years. Florida Ruffin Ridley lived in Brookline for a quarter of that time. Ethel Weiss's store was just around the corner from the school. Florida Ruffin Ridley worked many miles away in Boston and elsewhere. Florida Ruffin Ridley may never have heard of the Edward Devotion School. Ethel Weiss knew thousands of its students personally. The Believers in Change were an inaccurate representation of the opinions of the majority of the student body. A petition I handed out at school a month ago to name the school after Ethel Weiss was signed by 38 seventh and eighth graders. The petition stated, "The students of the current Coolidge Corner School are not happy. Over the past two years, our future has been taken over by ineffective strategies for whitewashing history. We do not believe in slavery, nor do we in racism, but we do believe in controlling our own future. In writing this petition, the students of the former Edward Devotion School demand that the new name of our school be the Ethel Weiss School. This name is not offensive to anyone and honors a longstanding member of our community. Ethel Weiss was well-loved by students of the school and was accepted as really everyone's mutual friend. Naming the Coolidge Corner School after her would be a great way to make up for the mess the renaming process has been so far. We, the undersigned, demand the Ethel Weiss School be the new name of the Coolidge Corner School." Ethel Weiss attended every devotion graduation from 1939 to at least 2006, when health reasons prevented her from attending. More recently, I did a survey of 39 random seventh graders, asking them if they agreed with the Florida Ruffin Ridley school name. Eighty percent of those kids said they did not. The vetting process for the 119 names the Believers in Change got from the town was reduced to 15, 14 of color, and one white person, without input from most of the proposing those 119 names. Ethel Weiss received the second highest number of votes to JFK, yet somehow their names disappeared throughout the process. The process should have been, who had a better connection with the school? A contest Ethel Weiss would have easily won. When Ethel Weiss died in 2015 at age 101, the Coolidge Corner community lost so much. It would be an amazing way to honor her to name the school after her. A sign on the wall of Irving's toy and card shop, which Ethel ran, said, "Don't do what you know is wrong. Consideration of others will allow them to think more kindly of you." Let us honor Ethel Weiss and respect the connection she had with this neighborhood by naming the school after Ethel Weiss. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons.
My name is Dan Lyons, and as a member of the naming committee, voted on three warrant articles, 26, 7, and 8, regarding the renaming of the Coolidge Corner School. My personal vote was to approve two of the warrant articles, 26 and 27, and to vote no on 28, which was voted down unanimously because the nominee, Dr. Sperber, had not been employed by the town of Brookline for 25 years, which was a requirement, or so we thought. We have all since learned that we had misinterpreted that requirement. The hearing was somewhat contentious, with some claiming that the entire process was flawed and unfair, and others expressing concern that if we did not vote in favor of the recommendation put forth by the student naming committee, we would not honor the hard work of these truly remarkable students. And thank you, all of you. You really and truly are remarkable and deserving of all the praise that you've received tonight. The final vote that night was to send only article 26 in favor of Florida Ruffin Ridley to town meeting for your consideration and for your vote this evening. Regardless of whether or not the process was fair, I believe the students could not have chosen a more worthy candidate than Ms. Ridley. About a week after that vote, and before I realized we had misinterpreted the requirement which eliminated Dr. Sperber, I sent a letter to the TAB suggesting a compromise by which the building currently under construction at Brookline High School and which will go over the tracks be named for Florida Ruffin Ridley and the former devotion school be named for Ethel Weiss. And thinking about this just last night, I realized that we-- excuse me. I realized that we have a third option, which I firmly believe will be a just solution to appropriately honor all three finalists, all three most worthy finalists. That would be to name the main administration building here at Brookline High School for Dr. Sperber, the new building over the tracks for Florida Ruffin Ridley, and the Coolidge Corner School for Ethel Weiss. Therefore, I urge you to refer this vote as proposed by Mr. Selwyn and restart the process at the next meeting or however you go about it with only these three options. That may not be possible, but I think we have some fairly smart people in this room who can get this done. We, as a town, need to take a step back to get rid of the animus that has been prevalent throughout these hearings and take this opportunity to get it right, to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. And we're going to hear from the Board of Selectmen first. Whoops. The Select Board, excuse me.
Good evening, Mr. Auditorator and town meeting members. Bernard Green, speaking for the Select Board in favor of warrant article 26. Let me just start off by saying, this warrant article and the others has really created a lot of heat in this town strangely and unnecessarily. I think we all ought to be careful how we characterize the process and the reason behind the process of renaming the devotion school. Edward Devotion was a very bad person because he held a human being, a fellow human being, enslaved. But I'm a little uncomfortable with some of the things I've heard around town on both sides, but for example, comparing devotion to Jefferson Davis and Jefferson Davis statutes. That minimizes the evil, the damage that Jefferson Davis and the Confederacy did to our country and especially to Black Americans, both enslaved as well as free. Let's just make sure that we keep everything in perspective, and I think that's an example of something that was not. So in May 2018, town meeting voted favorably on warrant article 23 to change the name of the Edward Devotion School to, quote, "An appropriate name consistent with 21st-century values and the town's commitment to diversity and inclusion." The thorough process for selecting a name for town meeting to consider was carried out as described by other speakers, and I won't bore you by going into that any further.
You don't have time, anyway.
Yep. Don't take that comment off my time. And we have the name Florida Ruffin Ridley before us. It's important to know something about Florida Ruffin Ridley, so I will just make a few observations. Ms. Ridley moved to Brookline from Boston in 1886 when she married Ulysses A. Ridley, owner of a tailoring business in downtown Boston. And I learned from the students just a little while ago that she couldn't continue teaching at that time because she married. That's really amazing. They purchased a home at $131-- They purchased a home at 131 Kent Street around 1896, and they may have been the town's first African-American homeowners, though more research is needed on that. Their children attended the Lawrence School nearby to the Coolidge Corner School. In Boston, Ms. Ridley taught at the Grant School and was a second African-American public school teacher in Boston. The Florida Ruffin Ridley School will therefore be the second Brookline school named after a teacher, second to Edith Baker School, I am told. Florida Ruffin Ridley was the daughter of George Louis Ruffin, the first Black graduate of Harvard Law School and the first Black judge in the United States. Her mother was a writer, activist, and civil rights leader, and she and her mother together founded several organizations to advance the cause of especially Black women's rights. Now, back to the town's commitment to diversity and inclusion. Naming the Coolidge Corner School after Ms. Ridley can provide countless learning opportunities for our students and community. Too often, in my opinion, Black and white Brookliners and others have notions of the Black experience based on unconscious stereotypes or wild stories from the police blotter.
You have one minute.
The story of individuals like Florida Ruffin Ridley, her husband, and family can give all students, whatever their racial or ethnic background, a view of Black achievement that can reverse how they view the potential of their fellow Black students especially. The story of the Ridleys can further Brookline's goal of diversity and inclusion by showing a side of the Black experience, the challenges of stereotypes that many people hold on to. We can see a woman who was an African-American resident of Brookline who, like all of us, was able to accomplish much and contribute much. Brookline students can have an example of what their Black and female playmates can do and accomplish outside the limitations that society tries to impose. There was some criticism of the process used by the school committee in coming up with the new name for the school. Town meeting's role is to consider the names properly presented to it by the naming committee and vote to accept or not. The Select Board noted the discussion around the naming has become unnecessarily divisive, racially charged, and with inflammatory comments from some quarters. The naming bylaw notes that the school committee as well as the library trustees may on their own name rooms after important people. We can name appropriate rooms at Coolidge Corner School for Ethel Weiss. I have also suggested naming an appropriate room for Rosemary Kennedy, who attended devotion and greatly benefited from her time there. Her tragic story also tells us what a school like a former devotion school can do when they really commit to including people like her in the learning process. Rob Spurber's contribution can be considered, for example, someone suggested at the Brookline High School. I also have told people I'd like to see some recognition of Marita Odetta Bonner, a highly regarded African-American writer and a 1918 graduate of Brookline High School where she contributed to the Sagamore Magazine. Sorry for reading this so fast, but I'm under pressure from the moderator. So, in conclusion.
Thank you.
On October 22, 2019, the Select Board voted favorable action on warrant article 26 to name the school after Florida Ruffin Ridley by a vote of four to zero to one. The Select Board voted no action on warrant articles 27 and 28. Thank you.
I'll take the motion for the question. Is there a second? All those in favor of terminating debate, please raise your hands. Those opposed?
Mr. Moderator. I'm listening. I think you said what we heard. Anita Jamison.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rutman. The question has been called, and there will be no more speakers if it's passed. Those in favor of terminating debate, please raise your hands. I'm sorry, yes, you're right. I should read the list of those I have signed up. Okay, with apologies. So, in favor of the Ridley name, I have Ruth Kaplan for the naming committee. I have parents Suzanne Shendy, Erica Anderson. I have Ms. Nobrega, Mr. Ananian, Ms. McClellan, Mr. Pollack, Mr. Levy, Mr. Bernstein, Mr. O'Neil, Ms. Greenwald, Mr. Gasiatch, Ms. Stamfer, Ms. Nabel, Ms. Myers, and Rabbi Vogel, who's not a town meeting member. In favor of the Weiss name, I have Anita Jamison and Ms. Halbert. And I also have two speakers who are not going to address themselves to either of those, Mr. Vexler and Ms. Frichette. Nobody's at the microphone, and I will now take the motion for the question. Those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Now, we will first vote on Mr. Selwyn's motion to refer, which I didn't properly direct you to. But it's on the orange supplement.
Recorded votes?
Yeah. I'm sure 35 people want recorded votes on these, and they do. So, the motion to refer is on the orange supplement. It's a referral to a moderators committee, the membership of which you heard from Mr. Selwyn would consist of various people. We will vote on that first. If that motion passes, we will proceed to Article 21. If the motion fails, we will proceed to Article 26, the motion under Article 26, which is the motion on page 26-6 to name the school the Florida Ruffin Ridley School effective September 1, 2020. If that motion passes, we will still proceed to vote on the motion under Article 27, which I failed to mention was a motion made by Ms. Joz Wiki. And I'm sure, is there a second? The motion has been seconded and sent on page 27-1 to change the name of the Coolidge Corner School to the Ethel Weiss School. And that motion, if the Ridley motion succeeds, that motion for the Weiss School will be accompanied by a writer to rescind the prior vote, so that in effect, the last vote that passes with a majority vote will be the one that determines the name to which the school will be named. So, on the motion to refer, Mr. Selwyn, this is Article 26, referral motion. And that's the first motion before you, is the motion to refer. Make sure your handheld devices are operating. Press 1 if you're in favor of the motion to refer, 2 if you're opposed, and 3 if you're Motion fails by a vote of 31 in favor, 185 opposed, and 3 abstentions. We now proceed to the main motion under Article 26. Well, I didn't get it, but it apparently doesn't matter. Proceed to the vote, main motion under Article 26, which is to name the school for Florida Ruffin Ridley effective September 1, 2020. This is the main motion, Article 26. Motion carries by a vote of 195 in favor, 15 opposed, and 13 abstentions. It ain't over till it's over. The motion under Article 27 now is voted to change the name of the Coolidge Corner School to the Ethel Weiss School and to rescind the vote that you just adopted under Article 26. You have a little extra time to think this over. The name of the Coolidge Corner School will be changed to the Florida Ruffin Ridley School as of September 2020. Thank you, and thanks again to our student participants. We now turn to Article 21, the main motion. We have quiet while you're exiting the auditorium, please. Thank you. The motion under Article 21 is found on the lavender supplement, bottom of page 11 of that supplement, over to page 14, moved by Mr. Waschinsky, seconded by Ms. Heller, that the town amend the general bylaws by adding a new article prohibiting new fossil fuel infrastructure and major construction as set forth and as you'll hear in exhaustive detail.
Tough act to follow. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you to the members. I'm Tommy Vitolo, town meeting member at large. Because of state policies like our annual increase in the renewable portfolio standard and offshore wind generator construction through 83C and 83D, and because of our local community choice aggregation program, opt up to 100%, please. Our electric grid continues to get cleaner. The New England Electric Grid is primarily a mix of methane gas-fired combined-cycle generating stations and non-emitting generation like wind, solar, and hydro. As a result, electric vehicles are cleaner than gasoline and diesel, and electric heat pumps emit less carbon pollution than natural gas boilers or furnaces. Because electric is less emitting, we reduce emissions every time we convert a behavior like propelling a vehicle, cooking, or heating air or water from fossil fuel-fired to electric. This strategic conversion of fossil fuel-fired activities to electric-powered is called beneficial electrification, and it is a public policy that reduces carbon emissions. And as the emissions reductions from beneficial electrification grow bigger in time, because the electric grid gets cleaner and cleaner every year, if we are to reach our climate goals, we must reduce our emissions caused by heating buildings with oil and gas. I'll say that again for the folks on the balcony and for the Massachusetts Sustainable Energy Coalition funded by National Grid, Eversource, and the developer of the Weymouth Compressor Station. If we are to meet the 80% reduction by 2050 required by the Global Warming Solutions Act, the more complete 100% reduction by 2050 goal, or the nearer term 50% reduction by 2030 target, we must significantly reduce the fossil fuel consumption associated with heating our buildings. This body clearly understands that. The applause shows that. But also, we showed that when we acted to prevent a gas easement for a firefighter training facility. We showed that when we acted to require the schematics for both Baldwin and Driscoll to be fossil fuel-free designs. We showed that knowledge last night when the petitioner, Select Board, and Advisory Committee were unanimous in including the fossil fuel-free provision for warrant article 4. Inspired by this body, our local legislature, I filed the Spark Act this session to require that new state construction follow the lead of the Brookline Legislature. And impatient with that process, will offer an amendment to the Transportation Bond Bill to require clean heating and cooling for money spent by that bill. We've got to cut emissions dramatically, which means we've got to cut emissions from our buildings. The most efficient, the least cost per carbon ton avoided, the most economic way to do that is during new construction. When you're in a hole, the first thing is to stop digging. We must reduce carbon emissions from our heating systems in order to meet our climate goals. This bill simply takes away the shovel. I apologize that I will not be voting on this bill because in about 30 seconds, I'm going to go outside and go back to the State House where we're voting on a supplemental budget and... budget and a statewide prohibition, I hope, on flavored tobacco. But I hope that you will vote favorable action on warrant Article 21. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gray, I'm not going to permit you to speak unless you do what all of your colleagues have done and removed the green. Yes, thank you.
Sure, sure. I can do that.
You have three minutes.
All right. My name is Jesse Gray. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct 10. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct 10 and one of the co-petitioners of warrant Article 21. This bylaw would require, when it is convenient, when it is practical, and when it is cost-effective, that we stop investing in new fossil fuel infrastructure in our buildings. As Tommy explained, we're bringing this proposal forward because this is an essential step towards achieving Brookline's emissions reduction goals. So what exactly would this bylaw do? This bylaw would prohibit installation of new fuel piping under two triggering conditions. These two triggering conditions are, one, new construction, and, two, significant renovations, which are colloquially known as gut renovations. When those two conditions are triggered, the bylaw would prohibit installation of new fuel piping. What would it not do? It would not prevent gas hookups to a building. It only regulates piping inside a building. It would not require removal or replacement of any existing piping, equipment, or appliances. This bylaw would take effect for building permit applications filed after January 1, 2021. It would create a waiver process to protect against unforeseen impracticalities or financial infeasibilities. It also has a variety of exemptions intended to make our transition to a fossil fuel-free future as practical as possible. This bylaw was a team effort that all of us in Brookline should be proud of. It required countless hours of volunteer research, much of which was conducted by my fellow co-petitioners, who include architects, engineers, and a lawyer. We also thank town staff for sharing a great deal of expertise, and this would not have been possible without the outstanding service of Sustainability Program Administrator Zoe Lynn.
You have one minute.
More broadly, in this process, our team has come to appreciate the extraordinary expertise and public service of Virginia Bullock, Cara Bruton, Jonathan Simpson, and Dan Bennett. We don't always do enough here to appreciate our town staff, so please join me in a general round of applause for all that our staff do. I want to thank Neil Waschinsky and the rest of the AC Planning and Regulation for helping us refine this bylaw so it would work for everybody. I want to thank Roger Blood and the Housing Advisory Board for their unanimous support and for helping to make sure that we could do this without slowing down construction of affordable housing. I want to thank the Economic Development Advisory Board, EDAB, co-chaired by Paul Sainer, for their eight-to-zero-to-two endorsement and for helping to make sure that we could do this without slowing down economic development in Brookline. We thank for their unanimous support the Select Board, the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, the Preservation Commission, the Climate Action Brookline. We are also thrilled to have the support of the Brookline Green Caucus, elders, climate action, and PACS. Finally, we thank the fossil fuel industry for their opposition and organizing, which is the surest sign that we are doing something significant to reduce emissions.
Please conclude, Mr.
In closing, let's stop installing fossil fuel infrastructure and instead install electric alternatives when it is convenient, practical, and cost-effective to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waschinsky. And Mr. Waschinsky, thanks to the, Ms. Khan, you have five minutes, should you need it.
Neil Waschinsky, Precinct 5, for the Advisory Committee. Article 21 is a significant bylaw that will change how buildings are designed in Brookline. And given that this is the first bylaw of its type to be enacted outside of California, the Advisory Committee focus has been on how practical the proposal is and whether it would constrain development in town. And while we're concerned with reducing greenhouse emissions, as your finance committee, we're also concerned with the town's economic sustainability. Many of us started out as skeptics, but by the end, most of us became believers, supported by the tremendous research effort by the petitioner team, expert testimony, and town staff assistance. This is evidenced by an overwhelming 21-4-4 vote to recommend favorable action. In the process leading up to this town meeting, the Advisory Committee served as a coordinator of input from various boards, commissions, staff, and citizens. And out of this process came a series of exemptions, plus a waiver mechanism which addresses most of the concerns we heard during our hearings and also addresses the criticisms expressed this week in letters from the gas company and other organized groups. The letters from those groups seem to ignore the carefully crafted exemptions which emerged since the warrant was originally filed. So, what's exempt? We heard concerns about restaurants and a reluctance to give up gas as an energy source for residential cooking. Those are not covered. We heard concerns about large building water heaters. Those are not covered. We heard concerns about certain medical offices and labs. Those also are not covered. The bylaw establishes a new sustainability review board to review requests for waivers based on individual circumstances. Waivers can be granted if there are no practical or financially feasible electric alternative. Special consideration will be given to the unique challenges of affordable housing finance. Also, the bylaw is only triggered for new construction and so-called gut renovations. And we set the renovation threshold very high, as applying this bylaw to existing buildings is most feasible when the walls are open. This bylaw breaks new ground, and while, through careful drafting, the bylaw attempts to avoid legal pitfalls, which could serve to preempt this law, we won't know if it'll pass the Attorney General's review unless we enact it. Even if we get a rejection, we'll have gained some clarity as to how to approach this issue in the future. This proposal is certainly bold, and the carefully crafted exemptions and waiver process satisfies our desire for prudence. The Advisory Committee recommends favorable action.
Thank you, Ms. Heller. And would Saya Emily Habeji and Emily Trowsted, please come forward and sit in the front row.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Nancy Heller, for unanimous board of, oops, select board. Still can't get it right. You've heard the details of this proposal from the previous speakers, but I want to focus on the bigger picture. In a recent publication of a magazine from the Union of Concerned Scientists, UCS, an article in that magazine reports on a panel discussion of climate experts. One of those experts, Julie McNamara, who's a senior energy analyst, makes the point that we need to, quote, "shift our thinking from incremental to transformative." Ricardo Salvador, a UCS director, comments that, quote, "We need to do nothing less than change who we are, how we behave, and how we relate to the planet and its resources." This warrant article, as Neil's pointed out, is a bold proposal, the first one outside of those couple in California. It's transformative. It requires new buildings of major infrastructure systems which don't rely on fossil fuels. For myself, I wish it could go further. I understand the need to make sure that it passes this body and that it passes the Attorney General, and therefore the prudence factor comes in. But we can only achieve our zero emissions by 2050 goal by transforming the building systems to fossil fuel-free ones, and we only have 31 years to do it. This warrant article is also a bold step in the continuum of urging us to change our behaviors. Tommy mentioned before. We need to change the way we live and behave by eliminating our reliance on fossil fuels. If we can convert to all-electric kitchens, that's way better.
You have one minute.
We can respond by adopting to ameliorate the dangers of climate change, or we can resist this proposal thereby denying the fact that climate change will advance with catastrophic results. I urge you to choose the former path to reduce our reliance on fossil fuels. Please vote favorable action. Thank you.
Now, before we hear the next speakers, I made a general request, and I had to victimize Mr. Gray by making it very specific to him. Please remove the green badges that you're wearing that support this article. This article has no opposition, and your proselytization is not going to do a heck of a lot of good, make a lot of difference. So, I call Ms. Habeji and Ms. Trowsted with apologies.
Hi. My name is Emily Trowsted, and I'm a senior here at Brookline High School. I'm speaking here on behalf of the students of Brookline. Nearly 400 students have signed a petition in support of warrant Article 21, many of whom showed up here tonight. I've always been anxious about the climate crisis. When I was in third grade, our teachers taught us about climate change. They said that every time we left a light on, we were wasting energy, and our long showers and baths were wasting precious water. The way they had presented, it had been so normal. Yeah, our polar ice caps are melting. What else is new? We learned that all the time. Something about the graphics they showed us really stuck with me. I barely showered for more than a few minutes, and I unplugged every single light in my room. One night, I needed to get up in the dark, but I had unplugged every single light, and I couldn't see. I sat there frozen. I felt that I was faced with this decision between plugging that light bulb in and having a future with ice caps and polar bears and forests and everything and everyone that I value. Eventually, I decided to take action. I joined the Sunrise Movement, the Boston Climate Strike Organizing Team, and the BHS Amnesty International Club. I learned that I could fight for my future, and I still feel that climate anxiety every day, but I don't feel powerless anymore. I have done a lot of work in the climate movement, and I have seen time and time again adults and those in positions of power say, yes, we believe in climate change, but we're not going to do anything about it, or that the steps that we know are needed and that the youth are advocating for are not plausible. Adults look at my generation as cynical, but how can we be anything else when we're constantly being pounded with the notion that there's nothing we can do? We are incessantly left with empty promises, but our hope stems from our call to action. Our hope is rooted in change. Last year, Brookline voted for a resolution supporting the Green New Deal and promises zero emissions in its climate action plan. Let me be very clear, warrant Article 21 is just the beginning, but it is an important step. It sets an important precedent. When you vote yes on warrant Article 21, you are telling me, you are telling every single young person in the back of the room over there, every single young person that signed that petition, that you are willing to take the steps necessary to support our generation. You are letting us know that the emotional, physical, and financial burden won't fall on us as we try and combat what is going to affect our generation and the generations to come the most. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Scanlon. I'm a Town Meeting Member of Precinct 3, and I'm Coordinator of Brookline Mothers Out Front. I'm a co-petitioner for warrant Article 21 because I'm both an architect and the coordinator for Brookline Mothers Out Front, which means I have a foot in both the worlds of design and construction of buildings and caring about meeting our climate goals for 2050. I'm a LEED accredited architect, and I know we need to reduce demand, tighten up our building envelopes, go fossil fuel-free in our approach to buildings, electrify everything, and clean up the grid. There are numerous all-electric buildings built recently here in Massachusetts. Since buildings account for up to 60% of Brookline's emissions, we need to rethink how we have been approaching building projects and move away from the status quo. It's simply not responsible, fiscally or environmentally, to be putting in systems tomorrow that will be burning fossil fuels for 30 or more years. Architects and engineers agree that on day one, when the program requires a fossil fuel-free system, you can achieve the project's energy goals at lower construction costs. HVAC contractors already have significant experience installing air source and ground source heat pumps. Well-insulated buildings with improved air ceiling can have the same building operational costs or just minimally more than traditional fossil fuel systems. This scope of the warrant article is the low-hanging fruit. We, the co-petitioners, have worked with many town boards and staff and consulted with well over 100 design and building professionals, developers, town council, and spent hundreds of hours on research. We worked hard to gather consensus around practical exemptions.
You have one minute.
Waivers, and an appeal process, so we could feel comfortable that what we are asking you to vote for would work for Brookline, to make this bylaw work for everyone. We also want to make sure that Brookline's transition to clean energy is equitable. The affordable housing sector is actually leading this effort with their own fossil fuel-free projects, including two by Brookline's Housing Authority. We want all Brookline families to reap the benefits of renewable energy. Members of Mothers Out Front support this warrant article because it is a practical solution to preserve a livable climate for our children. Our children will feel the effects of the decisions we make today, and this decision by the Brookline community acknowledges that reality. Many communities are watching Brookline's town meeting vote tonight. We want our efforts to spread regionally and beyond, so it really matters what we do here tonight. It's up to us to show everyone how practical this is with overwhelming support for warrant Article 21. Please join me in supporting favorable action on warrant Article 21. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Werner Lowey, Precinct 13, co-chair of the Select Board Climate Action Committee and one of the co-petitioners. With this bylaw, Brookline is protecting its residents from climate change. That's it. We're a green community, and under the Green Community Act enacted at the state level, this law tells us that we not only have the power, but we have the responsibility to take action locally with regards to things like renewable energy in new construction. Bylaw is different from what we do under zoning. It's different from the building code or the gas code. It doesn't add standards there, but instead, it takes action under our own climate action plan, which commits us to reducing greenhouse gas emissions to zero by 2050. This bylaw is perhaps the second most important thing that Brookline has ever done to reduce CO2 emissions. Brookline formally recognized global warming way back in 2000. Over almost 20 years, we've done all sorts of things, from buying hybrid vehicles to implementing municipal energy reduction plan to enacting the Stretch Code. We've started with things that save money. The most important thing, in case you're wondering, that we've ever done has been to enact the Brookline Green Electricity Program, which allows, through which the town has bought renewable energy for all of its residents. And, by the way, as Tommy said with his sign here, I hope everyone in the room has signed up for that. It makes a huge difference. You need to sign up to opt up to 100%. But even, but Brookline Green Electricity is also a step into the financial reality of climate change. Green electricity isn't free. It costs a few bucks more each month. Warrant Article 21 protects homeowners and developers from high costs.
You have one minute.
But there's a subtle shift. The expectation, and it's a realistic one, is that they will build all-electric because it will cost very little more. But if for some unusual reason it doesn't, to get a waiver, it's up to them to research the new technologies and to show us that it's not feasible financially. But I want to be honest with you about the future here. Not tonight, but at some Not tonight, but at some future town meeting. We're likely to ask you to vote for something that actually costs more money. This spring, we'll have our second Townwide Climate Summit. I hope you'll come and help us establish the priorities that we'll need to convince people that that money is well-spent. Please vote favorable action on Article 21.
Mr. Ananian. Ms. Vanderzeal. And Ms. Nobrega, you're next, unless we have a motion for the question. We're going to hear from Ms. Vanderzeal first.
Thank you. My name is Kaya Vanderzeal, a town meeting member from Precinct 15. I'm also a member of the Board of the Greater Boston Chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility. As you know from previous, oh, sorry. So I'm, this Cornelia Vanderzeal, sorry. It always sounds loud to me when I'm up here. Precinct 15. I'm on the Board of the Greater Boston Physicians for Social Responsibility. You've seen me here before, advocating for the abolition of nuclear weapons. PSR also works, of course, on climate change issues, which we really should be calling a climate catastrophe or an emergency. Some of my neighbors have been astonished that this town does not have rules such as we're putting forward tonight. They're very concerned about the changes in the climate. I know that we may be restrained by state building codes, but we can't use that as an excuse to do nothing. We need to move forward. This Warren article is not the whole answer, but it represents a start as we work toward reaching our goal of zero greenhouse gas emissions in Brookline by 2050. We understand, of course, that we must move more rapidly. Others have spoken eloquently about why we need to reach or exceed our goals due to issues related to our climate. I'd like to speak a little bit about the health risks associated with natural gas, most of which is obtained by fracking. That in itself is a dangerous and aggressive form of gas extraction associated with risks to human health. We know that natural gas is not clean. In addition, cooking with natural gas releases chemicals into the air of our homes that make children more susceptible to asthma and respiratory illnesses. A literature review has recently been done by Andy Krasner with a Masters in Public Health, who now works for Greater Boston PSR. And Dr. Stephen Jones, who's a GBPSR member, showed that, and this is I quote, "Cooking with natural gas increases nitrogen dioxide, degrades indoor air quality, and increases the risk of respiratory illnesses in children, including asthma."
You have one minute.
Thank you. Burning of natural gas also releases particulate matter and formaldehyde, as well as other pollutants, such as lead, chromium, benzene, and hexane into the home. This brings me to my last point. When we talk about the cost of using only electricity versus gas to heat homes and to cook, we always stop when we compute the cost of installation and the cost of continued use, whether it's electricity or fuel. We do not take into consideration the costs associated with the deleterious health effects of each method. I will say that I'm disappointed that the petitioners have had to agree to more exemptions than I think appropriate, but this is a very good start and that is what we have before us. There's nothing to prevent builders from taking the next steps. I urge you to vote favorable action on Warren Article 21, as put forward by the petitioners. Thank you.
Then a motion for the question. Is there a second? I have Ms. Frauley at the microphone. I have the following people who have signed up to speak. Ms. Nobrega, Mr. Schweitzer Shalit, who's a student, Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Mark, Daria Mark, Diane Sokol, Alan Levitin, and Cora Weiss, board, who are non-town meeting members. I also have the following students signed up, mainly, I think, from Brookline, all from Brookline High School. Sarah Snyder, Anjali Mitra, Yoonah Setau, Grace Sokoloff, Melena Kidderman, Alice Thompson, Gigi Walsh, Katya Satchero, Ananda Geller, Sophia Schneider, and Sonia Provost. Against that background, on the motion to close debate for the question, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously? Motion carries by a two-thirds vote. On the motion at the bottom of page 11 of the lavender supplement.
I'd like to request a recorded vote, please.
There are 35 town meeting members who want to, yes, there are, will have a recorded vote. This is main motion, Article 21. Okay, we are voting on the motion at the bottom of page 11 over to page 14 of the lavender supplement, the main motion under Article 21. Press 1 if you favor this motion, 2 if you're opposed, and 3 if you're abstaining. Motion carries by a vote of 207 in favor, 3 opposed, and 6 abstentions. We now take up where we left off in the warrant for the main special town meeting with Article 7. The motion offered by the petitioner under Article 7 is on the blue supplement. Moved by Mr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Lectris. Resolution calling for the town to properly maintain street markings for all modes of travel over to the second page of the blue supplement. One change in the motion. It should read, instead of, excuse me, instead of "to see if the town will adopt", the motion will be voted to adopt the following resolution, et cetera. There is an amendment offered by Ms. Hummel on page 7-5. Let's see what that's about. Ms. Hummel would, and the advisory committee would replace the, all of the now-therefore clauses, the last three clauses on page 2 of the motion offered by the petitioner, with a single now-therefore clause at the bottom of page 7-5. That's moved by Ms. Hummel and seconded by Ms. Hamilton. Mr. Miller.
Bob Miller, town meeting member from Precinct 8. This, my first, my sixth year on town meeting, my first Warren article, and I always knew that it was hard work going on behind the scenes, but I have a whole new respect for that. So I'd like to thank all of the people in town, on the boards and the commissions and the town departments, who do an amazing amount of work. So first, I just want to say that this is a pretty simple Warren article, so probably won't get as much discussion as some of the others. We're all thankful for that. We're basically asking for the town to make plans to, in the spring, when we have a vote on the budget, to make arrangements so that we can paint the markings on the street, which we put there for safety reasons. So I first want to show you a few examples of what we're talking about. Maybe? Kareem, is this? I can advance the slides? I don't know.
Well, we're trying to figure this out. The correction on the vote on the last Article 21, there's 209 in favor instead of 270.
Thank you. So here's Coolidge Corner. The post office is right down here. Here's what the crosswalk should look like. Here's what it looks like on the other side. Next slide, please. This is a marking on Beacon Street near the Barcelona Restaurant and what you can see barely is what used to be a bike symbol. And actually, there's another symbol here. I'm not even sure what it was. I assume an arrow? Next. Here's a handicapped space on Beacon Street, again, between Fairbanks and Marion. Next, please. Some more bike markings. These are, oops, sorry, Mr. Moderator. These are on Washington Street. Near the library. Here's a bus stop, right here, that's on Washington Street as well, near the library. Next. Here's a number of views. Actually, I think this is Cypress Street, but basically, we're looking at a line of various crosswalks. Next. And here's what it looks like when it's just been painted. This is Washington Street and Brookline Village. And I think, I think there's maybe one more? Yep, again, what they should look like. I think that's it. So, basically, this is a safety issue. We want our crosswalks, bike lanes, bus stops, other markings to be safe for everyone. Students and elders in particular, people with disabilities who are using our roadways and trying to navigate them to be able to do so safely. Motorists are affected by this as well. They should be able to see the markings and know where they can and cannot be, where to expect others when they're using the roads. I'd like to point out as well that the DPW, in addition to being really helpful, does not in any way contradict the need for this. They just have not had the money to do it. The town doesn't paint all of the markings on a schedule. They paint the lines, the lane lines, once a year. They paint, once or twice a year, I'm sorry. They paint the, oh, paint twice a year for the lines, crosswalks and stop lines, once or twice a year, arrows once a year, and everything else is not painted on a schedule. So it's not surprising that this situation is occurring. So what we need to do is make these part of a schedule. We wouldn't install streetlights and not replace the bulbs or traffic lights and not replace the bulbs. We wouldn't buy cars and not maintain them. We shouldn't put in safety markings and then ignore them until they're gone. So we're bringing this to town meeting now so that there's time for this to be budgeted. We're asking town to establish a schedule on which these markings will be repainted. So it's a pretty straightforward safety requirement. We're asking town meeting to pass the stronger language contained in the petitioner's motion, which says that the town shall do this, and it is a petition. So there's time to work out the details. And I'd like to give the rest of the time to my co-petitioner.
Certainly. Ms. Lectris, I'm sorry. You have two minutes.
My name is Kristi Lectris. I'm town meeting member of Precinct 7. I'm co-sponsor with Bob Miller. I, we know that street markings are put there to make the streets safer for everybody. Roadways are not just for the cars, though. In some ways, this Warren article previews a tiny slice of what we'll vote on toward the end of town meeting in Warren Article 31, which puts forth a holistic vision of sustainable transportation policy for the town and prioritizes the safe, space-efficient, and energy-efficient movement of people over the movement of the private vehicles. In the most basic way, though, this Warren article is about maintaining the existing investments that this town has made through public decisions to create pedestrian, bicycle, and public transit safety markings so that they continue to serve their purpose. I'm a member and co-coordinator of the Safe Routes to School Task Force, a statewide initiative that works on improving safe travel to and from schools, focused on all Brookline K-8 schools. And as part of this relatively new group, we've been working with school, town, and police departments to identify and improve these routes, including safer bicycle paths and pedestrian crossings, for health, environmental, and safety benefits. And we appreciate the work that DPW and the Highway Division has done, has made an extra effort to repaint the crosswalks near the schools before school starts in September and a second time through the year. But many of the other street markings that support safe walking and biking to school in high-traffic areas within the school sheds have faded out and kind of missed the large walking school districts that we have. We've learned through this process that the budget for annual pavement markings simply hasn't been able to allow for a regular painting of bike lane symbols, handicapped, and other symbols. I ask you to adopt our motion on Article 7, which is on the blue paper. This resolves that the town shall provide sufficient funds to allow for proper maintenance of street markings.
You have one minute.
And as a resolution, we find that we didn't want to weaken the language to be encouraged, as the advisory committee has put forth, because it simply maintains the status quo. Of course, we encourage all of our needs to be fulfilled, but the streets have not been maintained in the way that they should be. A resolution doesn't prescribe a timetable, but rather recommends that these markings be repainted as needed, which may mean that some markings in low-traffic areas don't need to be repainted yearly, but that's up for the details to be figured out later. We want to thank everyone who's heard our Warren article and we are happy to have gotten unanimous support from the Transportation Board, the Bicycle, Public Transit, and Pedestrian Advisory Committees, and also had our version of the Warren article endorsed by Climate Action Brookline and the Green Caucus. So we ask you to vote for the petitioner's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel.
Amy Hummel, town meeting member, Precinct 12, speaking for the advisory committee. So as you've just heard, Warren Article 7 is a resolution asking that the town properly maintain markings for all modes of travel. The DPW, specifically the Highway and Sanitation Department, is responsible for those pavement markings. Currently, just to be clear, their practice is to, twice a year, paint all gutter lines, all center lines, half of the crosswalks and stop bars near schools and in commercial districts. So that's twice a year. Once a year, they paint remaining crosswalks and other symbols, or the symbols related to them. And then, on a complaint-driven basis, they paint bike lanes and other miscellaneous symbols. So I would assume that would include bus symbols and handicap, et cetera. Like the petitioners, the department would like to do more, but the Highway Department can only perform as much work as their budget and other funding sources allow. This past fiscal year, they spent most of their budget, which was just over $102,000, to paint markings, as I just described. The remainder of the budget, about $1,000, along with an additional $3,000 from their operating budget, covered associated police detail costs. That cost also comes, is part and parcel of the work. Ideally, what they'd like to do, what they think would solve this problem, is to continue painting the gutter lines, the center lines, twice a year, and then add all crosswalks twice a year and all other symbols once a year, as opposed to the complaint-driven model. The committee learned that the estimated cost for that additional work would be about somewhere between $70,000 to $75,000, which the Highway Department has already requested in their plans for the upcoming fiscal year. So the advisory committee agrees that clear travel markings are a priority. We talked about possible other funding options, including TNC funds, which we learned don't include pavement markings, only maybe if they're part of a larger project, but discrete private pavement markings are not. They wouldn't pay for those, nor is there state aid available. So the advisory committee heard no opposition to this article and plenty of support. And as I mentioned, the department itself has already requested the funds needed to improve the pavement marking maintenance. So the committee did. So the committee did amend the petitioner's original language, in part because we didn't, well, we, we, when we voted it to more accurately reflect the Highway and Department practices. They have a painting plan and don't evaluate markings as they paint, as some of the original language had suggested. And also, just to reflect the conciliatory tones of the discussion, we use strongly encourage rather than shall. But essentially, everyone is in agreement. So by a vote of 20 in favor and none opposed, with no abstentions, the Advisory Committee unanimously recommends favorable action on warrant Article 7, as it appears on Page 7-4 and 7-5 of the combined reports.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. And Mr. Dempsey, would you come forward, please?
Thank you, Moderator Gadsby. Heather Hamilton, speaking on behalf of the Select Board. Line striping can be an important safety tool that reinforces where road users are expected to be. The Select Board supports this resolution and believes it is a legitimate issue. But like most debates, we had questions about how to pay for it. In its deliberation, the Transportation Administrator presented three different packages, all ranging in budgets from $50,000 to as much as $75,000 a year. Because whatever amount is selected will likely become a yearly operating expense, the Select Board directed the DPW to review its current practices to see if it is prudent to pursue pavement markings that could potentially last longer, and what impact this analysis could have on limiting the number of faded markings. The Board acknowledges that this is an important public safety issue, yet was concerned about the original language requiring the action be taken, and supported the Advisory Committee version that encouraged sufficient funds to be allocated for roadway maintenance during the normal budgetary process. The Board recommended favorable action on that motion offered by the Advisory Committee by a vote of three in favor and two opposed. Thank you.
Mr. Dempsey?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Dempsey, Town Meeting Member in Precinct 6, and the Chair of the Brookline Transportation Board. The meeting members have, in their combined reports, a letter from the Transportation Board that goes into more detail on the subject. Suffice to say that we think that this is an important initiative. We thank the petitioners for bringing it forward. We believe that Brookline is a town that is a great place to live, no matter any age, whether you're eight or 80. And part of that is about being safe on our streets. And being safe on our streets requires good markings and good directions for all road users. This initiative will help us achieve that broader goal for our entire town. The Department of Public Works, we believe, does an admirable job in maintaining what is out there, given their budget constraints. This will give them the resources necessary to do an even better job. So by unanimous vote, we recommend that town meeting support warrant Article 7. Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for a vote on, first, the amendment of the Advisory Committee on Page 7-5, the replaced language in the operative part of the resolution. Mr. Rosenthal would like a recorded vote of the 35 town meeting members that... On the amendment, Mr. Rosenthal? And on the main motion? Or just on the main motion? Just on the main motion? It's a great negotiation. Yes. So we'll have a recorded vote on the main motion. In the meantime, on the amendment, the Advisory Committee, supported by the selectmen, on Page 7-5. Those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? The chair is in doubt. We'll have an electronic vote for the, for the purpose of determining whether this motion passes. This is not a recorded vote. Motion fails on the main motion, on the blue supplement. This is Article 7, main motion. Press 1 if you favor the motion, 2 if you're opposed, and 3 if you abstain. Motion carries by a vote of 206 in favor, 2 opposed, and 3 abstentions. Article 8. The main motion, under, and only motion, under Article 8, is on Page 8-2, moved by Mr. Franco, seconded by Mr. Green, to authorize the Select Board to file a petition with the General Court, et cetera, relating to a senior discount program for water and sewer rates. Mr. Franco?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And through you to the body, Ben Franco, for unanimous Select Board. One of the lesser discussed jobs of the Select Board is to annually set the town's water and sewer rates. Wearing its rate-setting cap, the Board has, for the past few years, been discussing reforms to the town's water and sewer rate structure with the goal of increasing rate equity in reforming the structure to better conform with national best practices. Earlier this year, after receiving a report from a citizen and staff working group it appointed in 2015, the Select Board made a series of changes to the town's water and sewer rate structure. We're not here to talk about those changes, but briefly, including, we changed the three following things. Including more of the cost of the operating the water system and the base charge, rather than collecting it as part of the charge for the amount of water used. We corrected the historic undercharging of irrigation connections, and introduced more equity into the rate system through changes to the way the water rate blocks are constructed. I want to take this opportunity to thank the members of that Water and Sewer Rate Task Force for their hard work and assistance in crafting the reforms the Board recently implemented. And especially, want to extend a thank you to the town's Director of Water and Sewer, Fred Russell, for his commitment to the town and his dogged pursuit of fair and equitable rate and sewer rate structure. During the course of the task force work, it became clear that the town's current water and sewer elderly discount program should be expanded. Today, the town operates a discount program for senior citizens that offers eligible seniors a 20% discount on their bill. Eligibility for the bill reduction is based on criteria set out in two state property tax discount programs, and takes into account age, length of residence in Brookline, income, and estate value. This article asks town meeting to endorse increasing the amount of rate relief offered to seniors eligible for a discount, and to allow the Select Board to file a home rule petition with the Great and General Court to enable the granting of increased relief. The specifics of how much additional relief will be granted, and what charges will be, changes will be made to the eligibility criteria for relief have not been determined. But there is great interest on the Select Board, on the task force, and in the Water and Sewer Department to expand rate relief to seniors who qualify for all of the property tax relief programs currently offered by the town, especially the senior tax work-off program. The details of additional rate relief will be discussed after the passage of Article 8, and implemented annually by the Select Board when it sets the water and, water and sewer rates for the upcoming year. By a vote of 5 to nothing, the Select Board recommends a vote of favorable action.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Kim Smith, Precinct 6, for the Advisory Committee, which voted 23 to 3 to 3 in favor of the Select Board's amended version of the article. Article 8 would allow the Select Board to file a home rule petition to authorize the town to provide water and sewer rate discounts to eligible seniors 65 and over who participate in the tax deferral and senior tax work-off exemption programs. If passed by the legislature, the Select Board would determine criteria and implement the program. This article arose from the town council's concern that special legislation was needed for the town to continue to offer such water and sewer rate discounts. Although a number of communities already do, it was the position of the Department of Revenue's Division of Local Services that such authority was needed under a 1922 case, Branville versus Water Commissioner Villarica, 232 Massachusetts, 223. The petitioners of a 2015 special town meeting article on water and sewer procedures expressed concern about how long a home rule petition would take to get legislative approval. They argued that the town currently had such authority under state law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 69B, and that some towns already exercise this authority. The AC discussed issues with the current program, such as its availability to homeowners, not renters. Also, to be eligible, an individual must be the name payer on the water and sewer bill for the unit eligible for the exemption, a requirement that excludes otherwise qualified seniors in condos. Discounts should be available to persons with disabilities and other low-income persons. Raising the number of eligible participants would slightly raise rates on other taxpayers as the cost would come out of the enterprise fund. By a vote of 23 to 3 to 3, the Advisory Committee voted to recommend favorable action on Article 8, as amended by the Select Board, to include the addition of income-eligible in Section 1, the section line prior to residents age 65 and over. Thank you.
Ms. Pelkey?
Lynn Olson Pelkey, Precinct 2. I just wanted to clarify what the intention of the resolution is, because it stated that we want to expand it to the enrollees in the Property Tax Deferral Program, but those enrollees are eligible at age 60 and not 65. So are we talking about the subset of those individuals who are 65 and older? Or are we talking about everyone in that group?
Mr. Franco?
Again, the details haven't been worked out, but I will say now that I think the greatest focus has been on the 65-plus population within the senior tax work-off program.
Thank you.
I would hope we would consider changing that.
Thank you. On the motion on Page 8-2, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries by a majority vote. That brings us to Article 9, and for the following reasons, I'm going to recommend that we defer consideration of Article 9 until tomorrow evening. First consideration is that Article 9 is a highly controversial article that would institute a real estate transfer tax in our town, or at least petition the General Court to authorize us to institute a real estate transfer tax. There are both two sides. There's a, there are about 10 speakers who have signed up in favor of this petition, and there are half a dozen speakers that, that support a referral to, unfortunately, a moderators' committee. And the speaking blocks amount to about an hour. And I would anticipate questions from the floor. And this is one of those articles that you really can't predict ahead of time quite how long it will take. So, and the other reason is that the main motion, which has a number of changes from the article itself, was just passed out this evening. And through, essentially, a glitch in our process of putting together the supplemental mailing and the supplementary reports. And you haven't had an adequate time, I think for many of you, to consider the changes in the, in the main motion. For those two reasons, I'm going to recommend that town meeting defer action on this until tomorrow evening. And that means we will take it up after we take up the marijuana articles and the special town meeting 2 article relating to the change in the voting age. But before we vote on that...
Mr. Moderator?
I will hear from the principal petitioner, Ms. Brown.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
This, this is news to me, and...
You're right.
People have schedules, so I'd like at least a few minutes to confer to find out whether the bulk of the people that plan on testifying will be available for tomorrow evening.
Well, I can ask them from the chair. Do you want me to do that?
Well, feel free to.
Okay, Mr. Levy? You'll be here tomorrow night? He guesses so. Ms., Ms. Novrega? Okay. Mr. Gordon? Ms. McNally? Okay. Mr. Steve Vogel? He's not a town meeting member, but... Okay. Are you able? Mr. Vogel will not be here. Mr. Dober? Yes? Joanna Baker?
Okay.
There you have it. Okay. On the, is there a motion to...
To move.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries by a majority vote. We have before us now a string of, and the reason I, I forgot to mention, the main reason I recommended that is because there was some possibility that we would be debating Article 9 for well over an hour. And we only have an hour left until 10:30. So we're, we now have a series of articles on which there is no opposition. And let's hope we can get through many, if not all, of those before we adjourn this evening. Article 10. Motion under Article 10 is moved by Ms. Heller, seconded by Mr. Green, on Page 10-2, that the town amend the general bylaws by eliminating the Committee on Campaigns. Ms. Heller?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nancy Heller for unanimous Board of, Select Board. This article is part of an effort to clean up our bylaws by removing provisions that are now obsolete or unnecessary, and the bylaw on Committee on Campaigns is one such provision. It was originally created by town meeting in 2006. It accomplished its work, filed its recommendations on campaign reporting requirements, and those were adopted by a subsequent town meeting. The committee has no members, is not active, since its purpose has been completed. Please vote favorable action to amend the general bylaws... Please vote favorable action to amend the general bylaws to delete Section G of Article four point nine, thereby dissolving the Committee on Campaigns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. Neil Gordon, precinct one, town meeting member, speaking on behalf of the Advisory Committee. Committee on Campaigns is one of a number of dormant committees, and the Select Board filed this article after the moderator recommended that this inactive committee be removed from the bylaws. The Advisory Committee concluded the Committee on Campaigns has done its work. Campaign finance reports, once largely hidden from the public, are now available in timely fashion on the town website. The role of the committee played in analyzing campaign finance activity, both receipts and expenditures, is easily replicated by any interested member of the public. And should issues arise relating to campaigns and campaign finance in the future, a study committee could easily be formed and perhaps better appointed in lieu of maintaining a standing committee. By a vote of twenty-two to five with one member abstaining, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action.
On the motion on page ten dash two, to eliminate the Committee on Campaigns, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
Aye.
Motion carries by a majority vote. Article eleven. The motion is on page eleven dash three. Over to the top of page eleven dash four, moved by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Mr. Friedman, that the town authorize the Select Board to terminate and relocate some sewer and drainage easements. Mr. Friedman. Mr. Friedman has for eight minutes to explain all about this article.
Harry Friedman, town meeting member, precinct twelve, speaking on behalf of the Advisory Committee. Warrant Article eleven seeks authorization to terminate two old-town sewer and drainage easements, no longer in use, on Carrigan Place, a street no longer in existence. It also authorizes the town to obtain an easement for a new sewage and drainage system installed at one-eleven Boylston Street, adjacent to Davis Path. No money other than one dollar is changing hands. The map behind me is the nineteen-twenty-seven Bromley Atlas map of Brookline, and we are standing at the bottom where the number sixteen is. The Old Lincoln School is to our back. On the north side of Boylston Street, between Cypress and Washington Streets, going from left to right, there is now the Boylston Street Playground. The playground runs from Boylston Street to the former Boston and Albany Railroad tracks, now the Highland branch of the MTA's Green Line. The town acquired this property in either eighteen-fifty FOA or eighteen-sixty-seven. It was originally the site of the New South Primary School, later called the Boylston School, which is what you see on the map on the left side. The building was used as a school until nineteen-twenty-two. It was then used by the Recreation Department. From nineteen-thirty-one until it was torn down in nineteen-seventy-one, it was used as the Stephen Rutledge post of the VFW. Once demolished, the land was converted into playground space. Just to the east of the playground is Davis Path, a public way built in nineteen-eleven. It was originally called Walnut Path until nineteen-twenty-FOA. It too starts at Boylston Street, but actually goes over the BNA tracks via a bridge and ends at White Place. It is the only public path that includes a bridge. It is also the only way to cross the tracks between Washington and Cypress Streets. Just east of Davis Path was Carrigan Place, a private way. The street itself is only twelve feet wide. Like the playground, it extended from Boylston Street to the BNA tracks. As late as nineteen-thirty-six, there were three houses on the Davis Path or west side of Carrigan Place and three on the east side. Please note the arrow at the end of Carrigan Place. It points to a five-hundred-and-two-square-foot parcel of land owned by the town. The town acquired the parcel via a taking in nineteen-oh-five, when a grade crossing over the BNA tracks was eliminated. The parcel allowed carriages at the end of Carrigan Place to turn around, and was later used by Carrigan Place residents as a parking and storage area. Just east of Davis Path was the former Redcap Site, which is now the Homewood Suites Hotel. In nineteen-twenty-seven, there were homes and businesses there. In the nineteenth century, the town wanted to build drainage pipes and a sewer under Carrigan Place. Because Carrigan Place was private, easements had to be granted to the town to construct these pipes. What is an easement? An easement has a right to do something on somebody else's land. If someone else's land is between your house and the street, you might obtain an easement to build a driveway to cross the other person's land. The other person still owns the land, but the easement gives you a legal right to do something on it. Utility companies often get easements to put wires or pipes on your land. The drainage easement was granted to the town on May sixth, eighteen-sixty-three, by Patrick Carrigan, and the sewage easement was granted to the town on March two, eighteen-eight-eight, by Catherine Kelly. Slide two, please. No, there were three. Three separate ones.
I think you're gonna have to go it without your slides, Mr. Friedman.
Do you have the slide at all?
No.
Well, this is why I sent it, three of them, and I was told they'd been received. This is Carrigan Place in two thousand and seven. Between nineteen-thirty-six and nineteen-seventy-two, all but one of the homes on Carrigan Place were demolished. You would see one home. Economic times are good in two thousand and seven, and redevelopment of the Redcap Site is in the air. The town had no use for the five-hundred-and-two-square-foot parcel, and at the two thousand and seven November special town meeting, warrant Article fifteen proposed calling for a swap of the parcel for an equivalent amount of land that would parallel Davis Path. Sometime between the introduction of the article and town meeting, it was decided just to do a sale of the town parcel. The article that was passed by a two-thirds vote authorized the Board of Selectmen to sell the town parcel for no less than eighty-five thousand. Development then came to a halt. Presumably, it had something to do with the economic crash in two thousand and eight. However, five years later, things were better. The Board of Selectmen authored the rise of the sale of the town parcel on December three, two oh thirteen. At that time, the town parcel was conveyed to Claremont Brookline Suites, the developer of the yet-to-be-built hotel. It appears the full eighty-five thousand was paid to the town. As part of the redevelopment of the site into a hotel, the remaining home on the west side of the street nearest to the BNA tracks was acquired by the developer on March twenty-five, two oh fourteen, for one-point-four million and later demolished. On April twenty-five, two oh one four, the Redcap Site was sold to the developer for three million eight hundred seventy-five thousand. Thank you. So you can see Carrigan Place is that very narrow thing on which the house sits. It looks like a sidewalk. If we could get the next slide, we would see what the place looks like today. Thank you. So this is the site today. The old Carrigan Place sewer and drain were not very good and required a lot of maintenance. As part of the sale of the town parcel, the town requested the developer to relocate the sewer and drainage system and grant an easement back to the town. The construction of the new drain sewer was completed when the hotel was built. The developer paid for the design and installation of the new drainage system in accordance with plans and specifications approved by the town. The new drainage system, running parallel to Davis Path, is in a better location, and the upgraded design and plastic pipes are an improvement over the originals. Because the old sewer and drain under Carrigan Place have been abandoned and probably no longer even exist, the easements held by the town are no longer necessary, and the warrant article authorizes the Select Board to terminate them. Because the new sewer and drain are on private property, the article authorizes the Select Board to acquire a new easement of approximately one thousand and ten square feet on the westerly portion of the hotel property at one-eleven Boylston Street, adjacent to Davis Path. The easement will be in perpetuity. The actual sewer and drain go from Boylston Street to the BNA tracks and then join another sewer drain that goes behind the buildings on Boylston Street all the way to Washington Street. The Advisory Committee voted, recommended favorable action on the warrant, on the motion offered under warrant Article eleven by a vote of twenty-five to zero.
Never let it be said that Mr. Friedman doesn't do his research. Mr. Fernandez?
Raoul Fernandez for unanimous Select Board. What Harry Friedman said. Five-zero Select Board.
Mr. Richmond.
Clint Richmond, precinct six. So, one thing I, I think I missed when I was looking at Mr. Friedman's excellent presentation was what, I didn't see the arrows for the new easement and whether it is built over at this point.
Mr. Ditto.
Peter Ditto, Director of Engineering and Transportation. The actual utilities are in place right now, and if you remember the first slide where it said Davis Path, easement is along that, that edge of Davis Path, and it runs seven feet into the hotel. So it's about ten, about a thousand square feet.
So there is some space there where there's a HVAC or something. Is it actually built over or not, the easement?
The older easement's built over, gone, and built over. And the new easement is, is wide open. So it's, we have seven feet of clear space to maintain our sewer and drain.
Okay. Because I know easements have played an important role in, in, in our ability to have some influence over the properties. You know, we saw the same thing with the hotel project down at Brookline Place or that area. There's, there's the easement where there's gonna be a walkway in there, so as I, as I suggested last night, that we should, you know, maintain constant, if we can, square footage or acreage, however you wanna think of it, of our easements and public, public property of all sorts. So it's, it's, it's kind of ownership that can be very advantageous when dealing with development, so I'm, I'm glad that we're, we've kept it, and I want to reiterate that report from last night.
Thank you, Mr. Richmond. On the motion on page eleven dash three, over to the top of page eleven dash four, requiring a two-thirds vote, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twelve. The motion under Article twelve is a motion in the words of the article on page twelve dash one, authorizing the Select Board to enter into twenty-year solar power purchase agreements. And we need to amend the article so that it's in the form of a motion, so the first line, instead of to see if the town will vote to authorize, should read, "Voted that the town authorized the Select Board as follows." And please strike the language at the end of the article or take any other action there relative thereto. So that's your, the motion before you. It is moved by Mr. Doggett, seconded by Ms. Heller, and I call him Ms. Heller.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nancy Heller for unanimous Select Board. Don't ever say you can't teach a new dog new tricks. Okay, this warrant article authorizes the Select Board to enter into, by December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-year purchase, power purchase agreements with outside companies who will install, own, and operate solar systems on some municipal school and buildings, school, municipal and school buildings, and those are listed in Table A. The town will buy back the electricity generated at a favorable rate. The power purchase agreements would include a pilot program, a pilot agreement or payment in lieu of taxes, to capture the loss of tax credits that municipalities cannot access. The power purchase, power purchase agreement companies will incorporate their tax savings, their credit savings into the cost that Brookline pays for electricity. So this gives us a way of capturing those tax credits, even though we're not entitled to them theoretically. Some very good reasons to obtain solar energy in this manner. It'll help us achieve our goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions to zero by two thousand and fifty. It's a no-cost upfront way to obtain solar energy for the town. Direct purchase would require capital upfront, and our CIP cannot accommodate that at this time. In the future, we may want to explore other purchase options and plan for them, but currently, the PPAs solve the immediate action of capturing solar energy now. The power purchase agreements designated to take advantage of incentives offered by both Massachusetts and the federal government. We can participate in the SMART program offered by the Commonwealth, and in doing so via a third-party financing through the power purchase agreements, we can count the recs, the renewable recs toward our zero emissions goal. If we wait, we may lose incentives which are slated to decline over the next few years, and a twenty-year agreement fixes energy costs for the town. The power purchase agreements can allow Brookline to buy out the contract and own the system after a holding period, and it's worth examining, the holding period would usually be seven years. It's important to say that this agreement hasn't been really negotiated in full, but these are the general ways in which we're going. The power purchase agreements do not prevent the town from considering other approaches in the future. So please, please, join a unanimous Select Board in voting favorable action on the motion found on page twelve dash one. Thank you.
Mr. Doggett and Mr. Englander, would you come forward, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Doggett, precinct thirteen, and speaking for the Advisory Committee. The committee expressed support for the proposal to use PPAs to add more solar-generated power for the town. However, there are a number of questions that the town, that the committee asked of town staff about the PPA agreements themselves and potential project and financial liability issues. For example, two of the concerns were roof damage liability and financial viability of the PPA supplier over this twenty-year period of the contract that Select Member, Board Member Heller had just talked about. What would happen in the case where the supplier damaged a roof with a solar array installation? What would happen in the case of supplier insolvency, for example? Town staff in the second discussion of these and other concerns addressed the issues raised satisfactorily. The committee requested a financial performer analysis, but since an agreement has yet to be negotiated and signed with the supplier, this was not yet available. Staff did, however, provide a contract details of a similar transaction with the city of Fitchburg, which showed not only how the city handled liability issues, but provided financial details which looked quite appealing. The PPA agreement typically fixes the price of electricity generated over a twenty-year period, lower than the current price. If the cost of electricity on the open market continues to rise, this fixed rate agreement is a good investment. There is a risk, perhaps small, that over twenty-year period, green electricity could become less expensive than being generated through the PPA. Town staff noted that even if all six projects proposed in the article were implemented, the amount of electricity generated will be only about ten percent of the town's current electricity consumption, so the town is not putting at risk all its eggs in one basket. By a vote of twenty to zero with three abstentions, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on Article twelve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Well, you don't call a question. I do. On the motion on page twelve dash one, that you've heard described by the speakers, those in favor, please say aye. I'm sorry. Yes. Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article thirteen. The motion is on page, the bottom of page thirteen dash six, over to page thirteen dash seven, the middle, moved by Ms. Heller, seconded by Mr. Sandman, to, that the town amend the zoning bylaw by amending Section four point oh seven in the manner that you'll hear described. And the last paragraph on the... And the last paragraph on the bottom of page 13-6, for purposes of the motion, should be preceded by the word "voted." It requires a two-thirds vote. I call on Ms. Heller for the select board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Nancy Heller, for unanimous select board. This zoning article was developed by the town's planning department and some citizens' co-petitioners as a result of the summit in June, the Sustainability Summit. The thrust of the article is to permit, under certain circumstances, the installation of small ground-mounted solar arrays, and would be described in the proposed bylaw as an accessory structure, like a shed or a greenhouse. And the reason for this, some homeowners are not able to put solar arrays on their roof for various reasons. They might have slate, they might have too many trees, or other issues. And this gives people an opportunity to have a source of solar electricity. Now, I'd like to show you some pictures, courtesy of Harry Friedman. Here are some photos. Slide number 3, please. Okay. So at the bottom, you'll see a large, one of the larger installations on this side, your right. Your left is a smaller installation, and on the right, the one that's really intriguing over here, is, it almost looks like a flower, a black installation there. And the technology around these installations is advancing rapidly. Some of them even move to capture solar arrays. But we thought you would want to see what they look like. In adopting this bylaw addition, we would expand the solar options available to property owners, and this is another available strategy to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions to further our goal of no reliance on fossil fuels by 2050. The proposed zoning amendment protects against excessively large installations by limiting, as of right, ground-mounted systems to 10 kilowatts on an area smaller than 500 square feet, approximately the size of two parking spaces. The setback requirements would be 25 feet for all lot lines. To install a somewhat larger system of up to 50 kilowatt-hours would require a special permit, but in no case would it be greater than 2,500 square feet, nor 10% of the lot area, whichever is less. So there are some protections built in for size and protection in terms of what they look like, the setbacks, et cetera. You'll find all of that in Article 13 right up on page 13-1. Please vote favorable action on warrant Article 13. Continue our progress toward the town's goal of zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ridrao, and Mr. Hyken, would you come forward, please?
Carlos Riedrafo, town meeting precinct 14, speaking on behalf of the advisory committee. Warrant Article 13 is aligned with the town's climate action plan, is in a natural step towards meeting our goal to achieve zero emissions by 2050. Warrant Article 13 seeks to amend Section 4.07 of the town zoning bylaw to allow accessory ground-mounted solar portable tank installations. If passed, the zoning change would allow small, ground-mounted solar installations on private property. Currently, in Brookline, ground-mounted solar installations are only allowed as of right on the town's Single Trees Hill Reservoir Site in Chestnut Hill and the Newton Street Transfer Station. Although the building department also permits solar panels on roofs of buildings or accessory structures as permitted with our existing zoning bylaw, a ground-mounted system, such as the ones that we saw on those photographs, residential-scale tracking pivoting solar system that sits on a single pole, is not currently allowed. It is estimated that a solar panel installation of 500 square feet above the ground lot area is currently equivalent to 10 kilowatt, or currently equivalent to a 10 kilowatt nameplate size, is estimated to meet the electricity needs of a moderately sized house. Allowing small accessory ground-mounted solar installations would permit residents with unfavorable conditions on existing roofs such as shade or proper orientation to harvest solar energy at a more desirable area in their property. This gives Brookline residents an additional means to reduce their own carbon footprint and contribute to the town's goal of zero emissions by 2050. So therefore, Section 4.07, Table of Regulations, Accessory Use 41, would be amended to include ground-mounted solar installations not to exceed 2,500 square feet above ground lot area, nor exceed 10% of the lot area, whichever is less, and would be added to the table of uses, which already allows for accessory structures such as sheds and greenhouses. Installations of less than 500 square feet above ground would be allowed as of right, as long as the siding meets all the setback requirements for accessory structures, as mentioned before, which is at least 25 feet from all lot lines. Ground-mounted solar installations that exceed 500 square feet above ground would require a special permit. All of the installations would require to comply with the town's stormwater management bylaw, which regulates the removal of trees of eight inches diameter, breast height, when the aggregate is 32 inches in diameter. And also, a site plan review in public hearing, or, sorry, public meeting by the planning board will also be required for all installations. By a vote of 21 in favor, one opposed, and two abstentions, the advisory committee recommends favorable action on this motion offered by the select board.
Thank you, Mr. Hyken.
Steve Hyken for the planning board. The planning board also supports this warrant article. We do note that even an as-of-right installation could be as tall as 35 feet outside of the required setback areas, but given the fact that all of these installations will be subject to site plan review, we do unanimously support favorable action on this article.
Thank you. On the, Ms. Pelkey?
Thank you, Lynda Olson Pelkey, precinct 2. I'm just wondering, was there any analysis done to estimate the size of lot required to actually meet all these setbacks and the 10% minimum, et cetera? Like, are we talking a 7,000-square-foot lot, or does it have to be larger, or do we not know? I mean...
Looks like we don't know. We apologize.
Okay, so you have all these restrictions, the smaller of either 2,500 feet or 10%. Then you have the 25-foot setback. So I'm just trying to get a feel for how large the lot would have to be to meet these requirements.
Do you have a guess, sir?
Carlos Riedrafo, precinct 14. The assumption, I think, is that most of these installations will happen in the larger lots of South Brookline. It's hard to imagine them happening in the smaller lots in North Brookline, because of the requirements that we have.
Mr. Hyken?
I would concur with that. I could just give you an example. My home is on a 50-by-100-foot lot. So if there's a 25-foot setback, there's no place on a 50-foot-wide lot in North Brookline that I could do this. So I think Mr. Riedrafo is right.
Okay, so I guess the answer is no, the analysis was not done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
I have a question about whether there was any thought into the proper disposal, hazardous waste concerns relative to the actual panels.
Not entirely sure I understand the question, but you don't have anyone leaping to give you an answer. Could you rephrase the question, perhaps?
Panels contain a certain amount of hazardous chemicals, and if you don't have some mechanism in place for the proper management and disposal of them, then they could be improperly disposed of, people could leave them on their lots. There's all kinds, there's potential contamination issues. So I'm just wondering that when people were thinking about this plan, you know, I'm all for solar panels, but one of the things that doesn't really get addressed is the potential for waste. Was that clear enough?
Yes, that certainly was. I've got to assume that the, there are regulations for, and instructions that, on the installation of these things, that deal with the safety concerns that you have. But who am I to know? Ah ha. Ms. Bruton will answer your question.
Well, that's a beautiful thing.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Cara Bruton. I'm the Economic Development Director working in the Planning Department. To answer Ms. Brown's question, all ground-mounted solar, including accessory ground-mounted solar, are required to follow the site plan review provisions just for ground-mounted solar, and that includes provisions not only for when they go in, but also the electrical lines, as well as provisions for making sure that there's a bond for the panels to be dismantled if they become inoperable. And I can show you more about that in our zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Nanian.
Yes.
Perhaps it can also be heard. My understanding, this is just a...
Who are you?
Sorry, Scott Nanian, a town meeting member from precinct 10. I sometimes forget myself. The, my understanding was that the provision of zoning provisions, even though most lots in North Brookline would not qualify by right for ground-mounted solar, the provision of zoning requirements in this bylaw would allow for a special permit or a variance, perhaps, to install them in North Brookline. Is that correct?
Once again, I'm Cara Bruton from the Planning Department. Yes, there is a special permit provision to allow some flexibility. To go back to Linda Pelkey's question, if I might, just for a minute. Because the maximum is 10% of a lot, a 500-square-foot solar panel for a single-family home, if you do the math backwards, probably a 5,000-square-foot lot is the minimum. You're going to practically see these. So there are some 5,000-square-foot lots in North Brookline, but it is likely that most of them will be in South Brookline.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion at the bottom of page 13-6, over to the top of page 13-7, requiring a two-thirds vote, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Motion carries by a vote of 205 to 1. Article 14. Motion before you is on page 14-8. Move that the town amend the zoning bylaw by adding a paragraph concerning electrical vehicles. Mr. Nanian moves. Mr. Selwyn seconds. I call on Mr. Nanian.
Oh, there we go. I'll say this is what happens when you get a doctorate in computer science. The computers bear a grudge. Okay, so this is warrant Article 14, zoning for electric vehicles. I am Scott Nanian, town meeting member from precinct 10. And apropos, this is a quick disambiguation slide, because I've learned during process of this, I get frequently confused with these fine folks, great people to be confused with, I will say. But I'm here on this side. I'm Scott. I go by he, him, and his. Jesse Gray in the middle also goes by he, him, and his. He's responsible for warrant Article 21, and Jules, you'll hear from sometime next month, I believe, for warrant Article 31. And he also goes by he, him, and his. So briefly, you know, after the resounding vote on warrant Article 21, I, this is somewhat preaching to the choir, but the goal is to move away from this to something like this. We need to accelerate the transition from fossil fuels for the sake of our children, our climate, and our planet. An electric vehicle reduces CO2 emissions by at least 67% in Massachusetts, given the current composition of the Massachusetts power grid. And if I could call up our handy opt-up slide, if you, wherever it is, imagine, there you go. And if you do that, you can reduce the impact of your electric vehicle to zero. There we go. But the real purpose of this, or the primary motivation for this particular article is that the state of Massachusetts has a goal by 2025, which is now in only six years, to have 10% of the vehicles registered in Massachusetts be electric, and our infrastructure is not ready for that. In fact, our town goal, as set by warrant Article 31, which again, you'll hear next month, is 30% of vehicles in the town of Brookline will be electric by 2030. So are we ready for that? And the answer is no. We don't have a charging capacity for that number of electric vehicles in town yet, so we need to start on that. The provision is to allow, is to add outlets to some spaces around town, not necessarily full chargers. It could just be something like that, which looks like what you might have seen in RV park or have in your basement for a dryer. And it doesn't have to be a dedicated spot, and this is up to you, or whoever the property owner is. But we need to start building the infrastructure to put chargers in our parking lots. And again, this is at home and at work, wherever we have large parking lots, because electric vehicles don't charge, don't go to gas stations like gas cars do. 90% of charging events are at home overnight. 98% of charging is either at home or at work. Okay, so again, it's late, so we'll go fairly quickly through all this. Warrant Article 14 is structured like our existing support for bicycle parking. Like all zoning, it primarily applies to new construction or change of use. There are grandfather clauses in zoning. It applies, it says that 15% of parking spaces in lots with 15 spaces or larger should be EV-ready, which is have provision for electric power there, an outlet or a charger. That 15-space or larger requirement excludes almost all one- and two-family homes and small condos. By right, most residential zoning is only five spaces and fewer. And it uses the definition of EV-ready parking space that was recently added to the Massachusetts Building Code. And this is part of a comprehensive plan for sustainability in Brookline. This is including this article, warrant Article 14. Warrant Article 15, which I'll plug at advance, because it's coming up very shortly here, reduces some unnecessary parking lots in town. I think the key is to think of here is that the solution isn't just to take a large parking lot and add some charges to it and say we're done.
You have one minute.
Yes, I will be concluding shortly. So we first need to sort of minimize, increase the efficiency of transport to reduce the need for cars and parking to begin with, and then electrify what's left. This is part of the electrify what's left part. And we'll hear more about that in warrant Article 31. So, and that concludes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Selwyn.
Lee Selwyn, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13, speaking for the advisory committee, which voted 24 to 0 to support favorable action on this article. I really don't have that much to add to what Mr. Nanian had said, except to point out that we will be, exceed the requirements under the state building code. The state building code would require only one EV-ready parking space in a parking area with 15 or more parking spaces. In Brookline, we will require 15%, which would be, in that case, for a 15-space lot, a minimum of two spaces. For a 100-space lot, we would require 15, whereas the state building code would require one. So I think that we are advancing further than the state, and I urge favorable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heiken.
Similarly, the planning board, this is Steve Heiken for the planning board, we unanimously support favorable action on this warrant article.
Thank you, Ms. Heller. Well, Ms. Heller is coming to the mic. There's another change in the vote on Article 21. 210 in favor instead of 209, three opposed and six abstentions. Ms. Heller.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Nancy Heller, for a unanimous select board. Don't have really much to add. This electrification of transportation is an important component of our emissions policy. Please vote favorable action on this proposal, and it advances our goal of zero emissions, zero carbon emissions by 2050. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion on page 14--
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I'm Ed Leclerc from Precinct 8, and I just had a question to optimize the outcome here. I don't understand why it says it does not mandate that an EV-ready parking space be reserved for electrical vehicle use, and that seems like it would be self-defeating, but I'm interested in the reasoning in that regard. Thank you.
A number of things. I think if you think ultra-long term, when, you know, 30 or 50% of the vehicles are electric, reserving, that doesn't stop making sense, so I didn't want to write it into our zoning bylaw prematurely. I think it's reasonable to expect property owners to set up appropriate restrictions, and certainly if it becomes an issue in the future, we can revisit that with a bylaw change or whatever is required. But it seemed like a light touch was beneficial, especially because people were concerned about artificially restricting parking, perhaps, by having large groups of unused parking spaces. The most important thing is to construct the infrastructure. Those changes, those regulations about how those spaces should be used can come a little bit later, I think.
Mr. Davis?
Yes. What is the cost--
Who are you?
Jonathan Davis, Precinct 10. What is the cost of each outlet, or installing each outlet?
Mr. Nanian?
Yes, that's actually on, well, I'm not going to bother to go into the slides, but it's in my extra slides. So the answer is it depends a lot on some site-specific features, of course, but always installing at the time that you make, do new construction is the most cost-effective time. The estimate in Massachusetts for new construction ranges from $700 to $1,200 a space, based on reports from systems designers in Massachusetts.
And for, and retrofitting for existing lots?
The commercial retrofit cost would be as much as $7,000 a space, but again, it depends on availability of power and whatnot.
Thank you. On the motion on page 14-8, requiring a two-thirds vote, the motion should be preceded by the word "voted," so it reads "voted that the town amend Section 6.04," et cetera. Those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Those opposed, please stand. All right. It's unanimous. Thank you. Now, it's now 10:20. The next article is one that I have eight speakers, all in favor, but would take a total of about 35 minutes to present, which would carry us almost to 11, and goodness knows what questions the presentations will elicit from town meeting, so I'm inclined to allow a motion to adjourn at this point. Is there a second? All those in favor of adjourning to 7 o'clock tomorrow evening, please raise your hands. Those opposed? That motion carries almost unanimously. Town meeting is adjourned until 7 o'clock tomorrow evening.